Good morning, and welcome to our August 24th Board of County Commission meeting. We're going to start this morning with an invocation by Reverend Bob McDonald from Unitarian Universalist Congregation of the Treasure Coast. Reverend McDonald will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Daniel McHenry of the U.S. Air Force. Please stand.
Let us be in prayer. We bow in the direction of the power, the heart of the universe, known by many names, known as mystery and love, who inspires compassion for the neediest and who inspires our hearts to grow. May we who care and prepare for all things Martin, may we do our work as a calling so that all we work for may know we work for all. In the name of the one who is holy, who is mystery, who is love and compassion, the heart of the universe, who gives direction to ours. Amen. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some additional items and a consent poll this morning. Additional item consent 16 to adopt our proclamation commending the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 59 on receiving the National Flotilla of the Year Award, which is a very big deal. So I'm happy that we have that on there. Consent number 17, permission to amend the Florida Division of Emergency Management Grant, Mark Cash replacement. Departmental number five, American Rescue Plan Act update. Departmental number six, request for MOU with the District Board of Trustees of Indian River State College for proposed charter school to be located on county property. And consent one polled by myself, contracts that meet the threshold for board approval. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent minus consent one.
Chair, move the, I'm sorry, move the agenda with the additional items of 16, 17, Department 5, 6, and the poll of consent number one.
Okay, good. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have a couple of proclamations this morning. We have, our first proclamation is Hunger Action Month. Laura, would you like to introduce that?
Certainly. Good morning, Commissioners. Hunger and poverty remain issues of serious concern in the United States, the state of Florida, on the Treasure Coast, and in Martin County, with over 17,000 children and adults in our county categorized as food insecure. September is recognized as Hunger Action Month, and Martin County is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank to bring attention to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And here to accept from the Treasure Coast Food Bank, we have Erin Cox and Shirley Bendezoo.
Good morning. My name is Erin Cox. I'm, like she said, joined by Shirley Bendezoo. On behalf of our President and CEO Judy Cruz, our Board of Directors, our dedicated staff, we would like to thank you for proclaiming September as Hunger Action Month. As a member of a feeding American network of food banks, Treasure Coast Food Bank is leading the fight against hunger in our community by securing millions of pounds and providing them to people facing hunger. We are proud to partner with more than 400 local pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other emergency providers in Indian River, Martin, St. Luceno, and Okeechobee Counties. Throughout the month of September, the Treasure Coast Food Bank will be hosting many events, including our annual Outlaw Hunger Comedy Show, which is going to be held at the McAlpin and at IRSC on the main campus. Our first ever Outrun Hunger 5K, so if anybody is interested in that. For more information for any of these events, you can go to our website, StopHunger.org. So we thank you again for your continued support against the fight against hunger.
A library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests, and libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children while serving students of all ages. In fact, a library card is often a student's most important school supply. In recognition of Library Card Sign Up Month, residents are encouraged to head to their local library branch and get their card today. And here to accept, we have Library Director Jen Salas.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jen Salas, Library Director. Thank you so much for helping us celebrate September as National Library Card Sign Up Month. We have once again partnered with some of our local attractions. So if you bring in your library card to the Florida Oceanographic Society or the Children's Museum on Fridays in September, you can get your family in for free, as well as the Elliott Museum and the House of Refuge for any of their normal operation hours in September. It's perfect timing. Florida Oceanographic has recently opened up their Coastal Eco Center, which is beautiful. And the Children's Museum will be opening up a fishing exhibit soon. So it's great timing to get out and visit some of these local attractions. We are also planning on bringing forward a new way of notification of holds pickup and overdue library notices to our residents. So fairly soon, mid-September, residents can sign up for text notifications as opposed to just phone and by email. So thank you again for helping us celebrate. If anyone does not have a library card, please come to one of our locations or sign up online because it's really a great resource. Thank you.
here.
Suicide Prevention Awareness Month should be on your list.
You see that?
You have an old one.
Oh, okay. On my paper. Oh, wonderful. Okay, we have Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is aimed at directing the community's attention to this public health epidemic that destroys lives and devastates families. The Board is honored to be a part of the healing process by raising awareness and supporting services addressing mental health illnesses and drug and alcohol addiction. And here to accept, we have William Wims, who's the CEO at New Horizons of the Treasure Coast in Okeechobee.
Welcome.
Commissioners, on behalf of the New Horizons staff, the Board of Directors, and the volunteers we have, we want to thank you for recognizing this month. Sad thing that I must say that we've had 67 to date right now suicides that have happened in the Treasure Coast and Okeechobee area, and we know that within every suicide, we have at least 25 attempts. So we are trying to do our best to stop that. We want to again recognize you guys for saying that, you know, mental health matters and for acknowledging it. We are trying to do our best. I tell everybody who's listening, and I'm not going to give you the long New Horizons number, I'm going to give you an easy number, 211 or 911. They can directly contact us, and we are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So if you need us, you call us, and we will come out and talk to you or meet you anywhere that you need to meet. Thank you again, Commissioners.
That completes our proclamations this morning, and we are going to move on to public comment, for which I have several. If you would like to speak and you haven't filled out one of these forms, please go ahead and fill out a form. We have a three-minute time limit, and you will receive a notification just shortly before your time is up, that your time is nearing. So our first speaker this morning is Barry McLaughlin, and Barry will be followed by Gerald Bard, B-A-R-R-E-D, it looks like. Good morning.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Barry, Barry McLaughlin. I live at 9278 Sharon Street in Hope Sound. I've been a resident there since 2013, and at the end of the road, or on the west side of that street, there's been a berm since the day I moved in. It's been there all this time. Now, I just found out recently that there's been a request for removal of that berm as part of a paving project on Flamingo Street. And the removal of that berm as part of the paving project is a deceitful, unwarranted act of subterfuge. This claim of removing the berm, increasing the amount of safety, is false. It will result in an increase of traffic on Sharon Street as people use it as a passway through or cut through, and increase the volume of traffic, which is already slightly dangerous because of the failure of the Department of Roads or whoever manages roads. There's a traffic stop sign there that's always obscured through undergrowth at the side of the road, which the traffic department will fix that. So the removal of the berm will not decrease or not increase safety, but it will decrease safety. If all or the majority of Sharon Street residents approve the removal of the berm, then fine, but no poll or communication to the residents of that street was ever taken. I do not want to pay for the removal of this berm as part of the roadway paving project that impacts my safety and my property values. If the road is to be paved, fine, but leave the berm in place. It acts as a safety feature. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Gerald Bard, followed by Stephen Burdelsky.
Madam Commissioner, I think you mean Barrett?
Barrett. Barrett, with a T?
B-A-R-R-A.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Apologize for my printing. Good morning. My name is Gerald Barra. I live at 5327 Southeast Lost Lake Way in Hope Sound. I'm here to talk about, or like to make comments about solid waste assessment. I got the, I gather this brochure, it was printed by us, by Martin County, and I looked at it, and I also looked at what our, what our projected increase would be, and I guess having an engineering background, I think in terms of percent. And when I compared my percent, the cost of last year versus the cost of this year, I came up with about 24%. I've worked for 55-plus years, and I have never, ever gotten an increase of anywhere near that magnitude. In addition, getting Social Security, I also checked what the upcoming COLA might be, and that comes in around an average of about 5%. There's a range, but it's about 5%. So this, this rate of increase for our waste assessment is five times what the average COLA would be for Social Security. And I have a feeling there are a lot of people like myself who live on Social Security, and it's tough to set an example when you see milk, toilet paper, vegetables, everything increasing at a very high rate. And here we are paying 23% to a corporation, and I'm not, I'm not here to badmouth waste management, but the fact is, we're setting a precedent of raising this rate far beyond what would be expected to be normal. I understand prices increase, and there should be, and there should be some increases, but this is close to five times what people will experience in their Social Security. What fascinated me by this brochure that we printed, we're talking about waste management getting sustained technology, gas-powered trucks quiet, efficient, reduced emissions. I added reduced workforce because they probably will now have one person on a truck instead of two. So their expenses go down, and what we get in return is a large-capacity wheel recycling garbage pail. That just doesn't sound right to me. Something doesn't hold true.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Burdelsky, and Stephen will be followed by Tanya Heinman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Steve Burdelsky. I too live on Sharon Street, 9248 Southeast Sharon Street. I'm here to address the, what the Commission heard at their August 10th meeting in regards to Southeast Flamingo and the paving project there. Previously, the county had polled our neighborhood and asked us, who wanted the streets moved through Sharon Street, one of them, some of the other streets in what is commonly known as Hope Hills, but what is referred to in the property appraiser's office at Papaya Village. And our understanding is 86% of the community voted against moving those roads through. That's well more than a majority. It's an overwhelming majority. And to unilaterally make a decision to put through a road where it's been marked no outlet since I've been there, and that's a big reason why I moved there, as well as it bordered Jonathan Dickinson State Park, we don't want the traffic. We don't want the additional vehicles. Approve Southeast Flamingo's project to pave their road, that's fine. They will, they will bear that cost in assessments over the next 10 or 12 years per your ruling. But we believe as the residents on Southeast Sharon Street that are going to be impacted, that we don't want that berm removed. We don't want that 226 feet extended. And, and like Mr. McLaughlin, I think it was a bit surreptitious to put this on along with the Southeast Flamingo, and there'd be no notification. There was no, no public notification. Maybe the agenda was posted, but there was no public notification as there was with doing Southeast Flamingo. That was public. That was posted in the paper, but it did not include the extension of Southeast Sharon Street. It didn't give us a chance to come here before you and speak our point. Had you done that, I guarantee you, we would have a lot more people here. We just heard about, I just heard about it last night. We were able to get four or five of us to come today to address the Commission. That's how important it is to us. And, you know, you represent us, you represent the community, 86% voted against it. I think it should be reconsidered and brought before the Commission again. And I think we should review it a second time, and if then it's decided, then so be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Heinman, and Tanya will be followed by Frank McChrystal.
Hello, thank you for seeing us, men and women of the Commission. Again, I'm on Sharon Street, and as we were looking at the footage from August 10th, it was very unclear, because at the end of the conversation, it looked like it said that all the assessed property owners were included, and so of course, we're not going to be assessed because we're on the other side of the street, but it's very, 100% on Sharon Street, 100%, every single house said, please, we care about our safety, we care about our neighborhood. Even last week, we had law enforcement track down a criminal that, I think they said they had 16 cans of gasoline, it was something to do with drugs, because we're right off US 1. And the criminal was caught because he ended up in a no-outlet area. But if that, if that dead end is not there, he'll go straight through and find another way out, because there's five ways in, but there's only one safe way as you go through the streets out. But if you connect those, and you don't even include the properties that are touching it and are materially affected, I think what happens is the Florida statutes are not being fulfilled. So when you have someone from the county that comes to you and says, we included everyone that's being assessed, but we're not including everyone that's going to be affected or actually materially touched by the project, I think something's been overlooked. So what we're requesting as your citizens and property tax owners is if you will have a special hearing specifically for connecting Southeast Flamingo and Southeast Sharon, because we have lots of evidences, affidavits, showing the safety is completely compromised, safety, security for the community, and it hurts the whole community. That's why the whole community came together, and they said, we want to protect all the dead ends because it makes our community safer being just right off of US 1. So we just ask that you would consider that, and that you would look at, you know, what statutes are in place that maybe got overlooked, does this one got put on the back end? Oh, we're just going to take an extra 226. But that's life and death for some people, you know, and that changes the property value, and it changes the property safety that we all show specifically, let's live here because it's safe. And I think if you look at your homes and where you chose to live, safety's kind of an important issue, isn't it? So I ask that you would consider our safety and representing us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank McChrystal, and Frank is followed by Gary Brown.
Morning.
Is this it?
Yes.
Good morning, leaders. Here are the latest stats reported in the European Union Database of Adverse Drug Reactions for the COVID-19 vaccine. The results are almost a mirror image of the latest numbers reported by the American reporting system VAERS. 20,520 dead, 1,960,000 injuries, of which 50% are serious. The reason no previous vaccine for a coronavirus has ever made it to market is because they have never passed the lab animal phase of testing. There's this little issue of antibody-dependent enhancement, also called pathogenic priming, also known as paradoxical immune enhancement. The animals responded well early, generated antibodies, but during the waning phase of the vaccine, when the virus was reintroduced, the animal's own immune system killed a large percentage of them. There's a very good reason why the mRNA vaccines invented by Dr. Robert Malone at the Salk Institute in 1989 have never come to market in 32 years. Unfortunately, antibody-dependent enhancement during the waning phase of durability makes the vaccinated person much more contagious, increases virus replication, and makes disease worse. Remember, the virus is not the disease, the body's reaction to the virus is the disease. ADE, antibody-dependent enhancement, is the virologist's worst nightmare and the reason for the July spike in COVID. The evidence for this is obvious in highly vaccinated countries such as Israel, who had vaccinated more than 80% of their population by February, and then experienced a monster spike by mid-July. The new experimental vaccines have a durability of six months. Do the math. At 5:00 public, I will go deeper into the medical issues responsible for the staggering death and injury stats reported by both the European Database of Adverse Drug Reactions and the American counterpart VAERS. I will also, in Dr. Malone's words, explain the basic virology and evolutionary reasons we can never vaccinate our way out of a pandemic. Any critical thinker would ask many questions, especially in today's world of biased and censored communication. I have a couple. Why is Dr. Robert Malone, the inventor of the new experimental vaccines, not a household name? Why would the FDA yesterday approve a vaccine without the 12- to 14-year safety studies, knowing that this little issue of antibody-dependent enhancement has not been overcome? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Brown, and Gary will be followed by Gail Goldy.
Good morning.
We have a new microphone there.
Yes. Commissioner Hesington, members of the Board, represent Interstate Recycling. I'm here as it concerns yard trash processing, transport, and management, what's a rebid, RFP 2021 3340. The Commission met on April 13th to discuss the then-current bid, and as the Commission may recall, due to some concerns in the way that bid went out, the Board had voted to essentially throw out all bids and rebid, which it did go out to rebid. My client Interstate did bid on it. There was one other bidder, Camo Farms, who also bid, who was the apparent low bidder, and we have since filed a timely bid protest of that. So I want to address a couple items in my, in my short time before the Commission. One is at the last meeting, Commissioner Smith, you had brought it up, and Commissioner Campi, in terms of while that rebid process is going back out, what can we do with the current provider, who is Interstate, my client, in terms of extending their contract because it was subject to expiring? And so at the April Commission, what you were, meeting, you were told by staff and the county attorney that the contract then would expire based on, would expire on June 18th, 2021, and it needed to be extended. The problem is that the current agreement only has one 90-day extension. It has two renewal periods, one year each, and I believe Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Campi, you had directly, you had directed by your, by Commissioner Campi, your motion, which was seconded and approved, to direct staff to consider the renewal options. The county did not renew our contract, and they, and they very well could. In fact, you were told by the county attorney and the purchasing manager, who's not here, that you had the authority to direct staff to renew our contract for at least the one year period, up to two years. What staff ended up doing is, instead of renewing the contract, they extended it by 90 days, which was lawful. What they then did again, because the rebid process had not worked itself out in time, they entered another extension till September 30th. Candidly, with all due respect to the county attorney, I don't think that was a lawful extension of the contract. I think what properly should have happened is the contract should have been renewed for a year while the, while the rebid worked itself out. And so, but as it stands, this contract will expire September 30th. We think that staff did not follow your direction. We would ask that you direct staff to either renew our contract for a year per the terms of the contract, or for two, or I think the other alternative you have is to direct the county staff to reject Camo Farms, who was, in my opinion, non-responsive and non-responsible, and should be disqualified, which would leave Interstate Recycling as the only remaining lowest responsive, responsible bidder. So either direct them to renew our contract.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you.
If I just may?
No, you may not. Thank you. We can't, we have a strict time. Thank you, though, very much. Yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Gail Goldy, and Gail will be followed by Zach Gaza.
Good morning.
That's a new microphone, isn't it?
Yes, that's.
We were having issues with the old mic, and.
Yep.
We have it grounded. We kind of have that. Because folks, you know, given their height, we were having challenges as far as picking people up, but this will be.
Okay. Well, hopefully I didn't do too much damage here, so. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Gail Goldy, 1153 Northwest 12th Terrace in Stewart. And I'm here because I'd like to let the commissioners know about a program that's available for the community. November is National Diabetes Month, and we have a local pharmacy that is offering a program for all the residents for diabetes awareness and prevention. It's a 24-week course, free of charge to the residents. And I wanted to get permission to put the poster in the library so that people could sign up in light of COVID, and we all know that one of the comorbidities with COVID is diabetes. And I think that it would be a wonderful, wonderful addition to the community for them to be educated and know that there's a program available for them so that they can learn about the diabetes prevention. So my question to you is, I'm asking for permission to place a small poster in the library so that they can scan the QR code and then go and sign up for the program if they so choose. I understand that the library is not a place for posters and all different types of information that people just want to post in there. But I do believe that this is a community service that the commission should certainly back. And with November being National Diabetes Month, November 14th is National Diabetes Day. And I think that it would be a wonderful thing for the community to offer to the residents. And I have some brochures here that I'd like to just pass out with some information about the program. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have staff follow up with you on the information you would like to present. Our next speaker is Zach Gaza, and Zach will be followed by Tom Pine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Zach Gaza. I own a company called Be a Man by Land. I'm here this morning to talk to you about a map called Palm Beach Heights within Palmar. I own over 2,000 acres within this map. At your April 27th commissioners' meeting, your staff made a very comprehensive Palmar presentation to your board regarding the history, environmental significance, and real estate breakdown within Palmar, as well as the importance of land acquisition of the smaller properties within the map of Palm Beach Heights. I watched the commissioner meeting online, and after staff's presentation, Commissioner Campi, you expressed interest in pursuing a land swap from one section of Palmar to another section. I emailed you a proposal on this. I haven't heard back. Commissioner Smith, you stated that you were interested in purchasing the rest of Palmar. I will sell Martin County all of my properties today, tomorrow. Over time, I'm happy to work out any sort of contract for purchase if the county is interested in it, but I haven't heard anything from Martin County regarding that. Commissioner Jenkins, you expressed urgency in doing something here. I agree. But once again, I haven't heard from any of the commissioners. I'm coming here in a public comment period because I don't know what else to do. Commissioner Heatherington, you referred to money being set aside for land purchases within Palmar that's losing its value. I agree. Maybe another plan needs to be talked about. Talk to me. Somebody call me, email me. I'm trying the best that I can here. Commissioner Hurd, you referred to Palmar as the finest ecosystem in the greater Everglades outside of the park. You also referred to Palmar as being messy. We can clean it up. It's not, it's not that bad. I've made a series of phone calls and emails to your offices in June with no response. In August, I emailed a proposal including 244 acres of properties to trade from one area to another area. This attempt also fell flat. My original intent purchasing properties within Palm Beach Heights was to land swap with the county. I began selling properties because I can't wait for the county anymore. Tax season's coming up again, and I'm going to, I get a box from the county. It's about this big of my tax bills, and I pay them every year. I can't do this forever. I can't afford to preserve the property for the county. I'm hopeful that the county would work with me on a trade, a purchase, or another agreement for preservation. I've only been selling properties on the east side. I've left the west side intact. I haven't sold them a lot as I've maintained I would do. There's a time limit here. I can't do it forever. Thank you.
Thank you. And, well, the whole board just lit up. We have Commissioner Campi.
Yes. Yes. My request, sir, with all due respect, I had reached, I had heard that you had reached out through the chamber as well. Ms. Woods, can you address what the elephant in the room might be for us not reaching back out?
Yes, we are currently, as Mr. Gaza knows, in litigation and in dispute with Mr. Gaza. Therefore, it is inappropriate for you to reach out to my client, and we have requested that you not contact the county commissioners. I've requested the county commissioners to not speak with you because they are represented by council, which would be the office of the county attorney. You have been in contact with my office, with Ruth Holmes, who is in charge of that matter, and you have been responded to. There's also an agenda Ida coming up on September 14th that, when Palmar will be discussed. But this is common practice with the Board of County Commissioners for if we're in active litigation, the client will be represented by the attorney, and that's through my office. And so that's why it is a little bit disingenuous to say you haven't been responded to. You've been told that the commissioners were advised by me not to speak to you because we're in litigation. Okay? I'm welcome to, I'll talk to you. Ms. Holmes has talked to you several times, but we're not going to do this individually with a commissioner. They're a body politic. They meet together.
If I could speak to the lawsuit?
No, no, sir.
No.
This is a one-sided, okay.
Yes.
So I'm just here to listen.
Thank you.
I'll be selling.
Okay, our next speaker is Tom Pine, followed by Kathy Miskowski.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Tom Pine. I've been a resident of Martin County for over 45 years. I presently live in Jensen Beach, Florida. I'm here today to speak against the approval of the latest contract with waste management for one reason and one reason only. Out of three bids the county received for the collection of our garbage, waste management was the highest bidder, point-blank the highest bidder out of three contracts, out of three The two other companies that submitted bids serviced many counties throughout the state of Florida. Why did we even waste the other company's time since it seems the winner was already picked? It makes no difference to me who picks up my garbage, but those people making the decision seem to be more concerned with keeping the good old boys employed than any interest in saving the taxpayers of Martin County any money. Today, at a presentation, we heard how many thousands of people in Martin County have food insecurity, where every dollar does count. I know it doesn't make much difference to those people sitting before me that I'm speaking for those of us who live in Martin County that live near or below the median income, where every dollar does count. Keeping the good old boys employed and happy is also a major help for some commissioners when they are running for reelections. Since our elections are currently, county offices are held in August, and turnout is usually extremely low, keeping the good old boys and other special interests happy is critical for some incumbents to ensure an easy win. The only reason we're even talking about this today is because the state of Florida requires anything changes to add valor in assessment must be state law, state laws discussed, it's, I'm sorry, assessment must, must by state law be discussed at a public meeting. Otherwise, this would be probably just be buried in the consent agenda with everything else that gets buried there. Thank you for your time and have a nice day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Miskowski, followed by David Mixon. And Kathy, if I mispronounced your name, then please correct it.
No, that's correct. Kathy Miskowski. Kathy Miskowski, resident at 9 South Ridgeview, Soul's Point. Those who have resided in Martin County 35 years or more remember when we paid waste management directly. We curtailed pickup when we went on vacation, and we were in control of reducing our own cost. Eventually, we lost those advantages. Now with things like waste services on our tax bill, we expect you to make decisions about our billing that ensure us basic protections, quality of life, and economic viability. In 2010, Martin County waste service was $289, which slowly increased to $314 in 2020. That was a total increase of $25, or 8.6% over a 10-year period. Now we are faced with a 24% increase. It is naive to think this will be the only increase for years to come. Taxpayers are not paying $75 more. We are paying over $6 million more based on the 2019 census of 81 housing units existing in Martin County. The new builds throughout our county, this could become $7 million or more of our hard-earned money being taken. You chose the nation's largest residential recycler while claiming a mutual commitment to environmental leadership. A quick research shows the government has bought into a lie. Environmentalists are finding natural gas is not the sustainable bridge to the future. While natural gas has less CO2 emissions, its methane emissions are considered worse. So the only thing residents are getting for their $6 to $7 million are large wheeled recycling carts. Any tax increase affects everyone. We are all being affected by COVID fluctuating incomes and a world of escalating prices of food, gas, insurance, home improvements, and ever-increasing mill rates on our county taxes. You should not support questionable, sustainable technology, nor should you invest to benefit the future of an innovative business with our tax dollars. You should take the opportunity and adversity, tighten our financial belts, make prudent choices that recognize and support the fabric of our communities, the residents. We ask that you sustain the residents of Martin County first by doing the right thing, lower the increase.
Thank you. Our next speaker, you have the public hearing number one, David Mixon. Would you like to wait to that item?
Yes.
Okay, great. John Donnelly, do you want to speak during public comment or public hearing number one? Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Would you like to speak now?
I don't have much to say.
My name is John Donnelly. I live at 1078 Northeast Green Lawn Drive in Jensen Beach. I'm here to speak about the waste management contract. I don't have much to say about it, except that if any one of us came home after shopping for a car and told our wives, I just paid $100,000 for this brand-new Cadillac, but I could have went down the street to the dealer, to another dealer, and got it for $50,000, what do you think would happen to us? I mean, come on, we're, we're buying garbage pickup. We're paying 24% more for the same exact thing. The bids are supposed to be all equal bids, so we're not comparing apples to oranges. We're comparing apples to apples. So why are we paying 24% more for an apple that we can get in the same place, same time, for less money? I mean, it doesn't make sense. Sorry, but I'm not voting for any of you if you approve this. In fact, I might run against you. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Frank, and I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting. Yanez?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I moved to Hope Hills. I'm a Martin County resident since 1998. I'm, I'm here to speak regarding the berm on Sharon Street. I purchased that property 20, over 20 years ago because it was a safe little street. And over time, you know, we've had some homes built and what have you, and it's, the traffic has increased a little bit. But that berm does serve as protection for the community and the people that live on Sharon Street. And I think that it would be a disservice to us because, I mean, not a disservice, but just, it would remove our safety. I feel safer living on Sharon Street because of that. I mean, it minimizes the traffic that does not know the neighborhood because all the residents in the neighborhood know that it's a dead-end street. All the residents that do use that street, they use it with the golf carts. And I'm fine with the golf carts, no problem. You know, there's a little access there. But that berm does protect us on Sharon Street, and I oppose, you know, that removing the berm. Jenkins, I voted for you. Here I am. Work for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alicia, do you want to speak during the item or public comment? Alicia?
Which of your preference? I don't care.
It's, no, it's, you have public comment, but waste management.
I'll speak now.
Come forward.
Good morning, Alicia Parento. I live in unincorporated Martin County. I am here to ask you to not increase the assessment. Last year, it was September when the bid went out for the RFP for waste management. They were the most expensive hauler. They increased the rate 36.1%, 01% from the previous year. I believe it was $16.08 per month, and then it went up to 20, with the proposal, it was going to be $21.87. As we learned today, it's an additional 24% increase. The taxpayers should not have to continue to fund their bottom line. You know, we don't, inflation, gas, if the stimulus is not renewed by the feds, then our homeowners are going to be strapped for even more cash. But they had $5 million to budget, to allocate properly, and be responsible for the money that they did increase, that you did give them over the other two haulers. So I'm just asking you not to honor their request for an additional increase. Let them figure out how to spend the money that we've, you've already given them. $5 million for the rate for each year of their contract is $45 million. The taxpayer should not have to pay any additional money since they're already being given a gift, in my opinion. They were, should not have been, that RFP was poorly written, and it was accepted, and I think it was a bad choice last year. I think it's even a bigger mistake to give them more money this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is my final speaker for public comment. We have one for public hearing number one. Anybody else wish to speak for public comment? We will move on to commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Jenkins.
Yes, we've had four speakers speak to us about Sharon Street, and Mr. Zama is here. The questionnaire that went out, I assumed was for the connection of the Highborn community and the Hope Hills community, it all being Papaya Village. I was not aware that we included in that, or did we include in that, the interconnections inside Hope Hills? What?
So George Zama, Public Works Deputy Director, we did send out a ballot that was referenced by one of the public speakers. It was a very generic ballot for connections, but we also did pinpoint two roadways that would connect two separate subdivisions. As you may or may not be aware, Hope Hills subdivision only has one connection to US-1. There is a neighboring subdivision to the east that also has a connection. And the ballot was more geared to the both residents of each respective subdivision if they wanted to make a connection to each, to each neighborhood for additional connections to US-1, for more connectivity to US-1 and between each subdivision. And that came back with, as one of the speakers mentioned. mentioned, about 80% objected to connect.
Okay. But it didn't directly approach the interconnection of specifically Sharon Street inside the Hope Hills community?
Correct.
Okay, well, it sounds like that some of the neighbors do not want that connection. You know, I maybe should have read that agenda item a little more in detail than I did. I apologize for that. I think that, is it possible for us to survey all the residents on, you'd have to do the whole neighborhood?
If I may, I can give a little bit more of a background, and pardon me for I was not here for the prior hearing due to COVID protocols. So this specific connection is much like a sister project that was performed on the other side of Duncan Street. There was MSBU roadway proposal, or an MSBU that was approved in 2018, connecting Flamingo Drive to Karen Street. There was also some opposition to this connection, and after the project was completed, we, the opposition actually seemed more favorable. This connection would connect two, Flamingo Drive is a residential roadway, and the connecting street, which would be Hope, Hope Hills Drive, is also a residential street. So we would not be connecting to a collector road, which really, there's, you know, if we're not connecting to a collector or arterial roadway, there's really not much cut-through traffic, as was mentioned. Also, you know, providing the connections would improve emergency access and connect, you know, roadway connectivity, as well as county operations. As you may or may not be aware, Hope Hills has varying topography that provides challenges for drainage. We are in the midst of a performing design for a neighborhood restoration project with some of those challenges, and adding berms to roadways with a drop-off in the roadway elevation does provide challenges. Also, Sharon Street between Hope Hills Drive and this western termination point where this berm is, this roadway was turned over to the county years ago for ownership, operation, and maintenance. And with that yields the county's determination of best use for safety function and welfare within the community.
I get that. And what is the schedule for, I mean, we just approved this. I'm sure it has to go through the whole process of selecting a contractor and all that. So it's going to be a little while that we can have further conversation about this.
We can, yes. And we intended to utilize one of the county's continuing services contracts to perform the work.
Okay. So what's the timeline on boots-on-the-ground with this project?
We are proceeding with drainage work in the area. We are carrying forward with the neighborhood restoration project, which is somewhat intertwined. We will be bidding that out, but specifically for this roadway MSBU, we were looking to get started within the next two months.
All right. Thank you. We'll be talking to you about this later.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zama. Thank you for the update. We all heard what the residents said this morning. I obviously understand that it's in Commissioner Jenkins' district, but I did have concerns with what I heard this morning about the process. And you know how I feel about you, Mr. Zama. I think you're a superstar. And you basically confirmed this morning that the way that the notification was sent out to those residents didn't necessarily include the people that would not have been charged, but would have, as the speaker said this morning, been affected by it, because it didn't, correct me if I'm wrong?
There was, our county code for MSBU process requires a notification. A public notification was disseminated. However, we did not specifically target residents within the community of a public meeting. So both the initial assessment resolution and the final assessment resolution for this specific roadway MSBU followed all public notification requirements within the code.
I understand that. I'm not saying that the code was breached. What I'm saying is, is that based on the language there, the people that came this morning would not have been on the list to receive that notification, correct? If they were just on the opposite, if they were on Sharon Street, not going to be assessed anything, not paved in front of their house, but they'll be affected by the fact that the berm, which virtually made their street a dead end, is now going to be a pass-through street, on the Sharon residents wouldn't have been notified. They wouldn't, it wasn't your responsibility to notify them based on the code, correct?
Yes, it was a generic public notification to the media.
Right. So with that in mind, I think that their concerns are legit. And, you know, I put myself in those situation, if I had purchased a home on that street that historically had been a dead end, and now it's going to become a pass-through street. You said that the residents had taken a survey or something, and came up with about 86% of them that were not in favor of that. I think that has to be taken into consideration. So I agree with Commissioner Jenkins, that I personally would request that the staff do not move forward. They didn't have a problem with the paving or anything else. It's the concept of the connectivity. I would leave, either leave it alone and end the conversation now, or have a conversation where those affected parties would be invited to come, and let's hear from them. The five of us need to hear from them, and give you, staff, direction on whether we think that's a good idea. The reasons that you're saying it would be beneficial, I hear you. But I would like to weigh what staff feels is beneficial positives versus the actual negatives that the residents will feel. I don't know if the positives in this particular case would outweigh the negative impact that those residents would be affected by. That's my opinion. So I'm not in favor. If I have to make a motion to reconsider the last decision, I will do that. If it still passes, so be it. But I don't want to be part of that berm removal decision any longer. Thank you.
Do you want a conversation to come back?
I defer.
I would prefer to have some time to talk about this with Mr. Zama, and maybe figure out, excuse me, how to fairly survey, not just the people that are benefiting from the road being a dead end. There is some, I've also gotten a few, not a lot, of people that are looking forward to connectivity within their community, that don't live, that live down on the other side of Flamingo, more west of where Sharon is, or where we're talking, on Sharon, west of there. So, yes, I have some concerns that I kind of thought everybody was on board with this interconnect of this particular little section of Hope Hills. And now I'm a little uncomfortable to know that, that, I do know that there's one person, or maybe two, on either side of this berm that are using this right-of-way as their own personal parking lot. That, their decision is probably not something I would base a decision on, their objection, I mean. But somebody that lives down the road that is inconvenienced by not being able to use a county right-of-way is somebody that needs to be heard from also. Again, the whole safety issue of having a dead-end run, I get all that. And if that's, if the, if the neighborhood, majority of the neighborhood want it to be the way it is, that's the way we should do it, or way we should pave up to this berm. So with that, I just would prefer to have, you know, a few, a few times to talk to Mr. Zama and us to pursue this.
For clarity and
Tap the brakes just.
Forward direction, we're going to pause on moving forward on that project. Do we need a motion, or?
So this is more complicated than normal, and I'm looking at our Public Works Director and Mr. Zama, the deputy public, I, this is a special assessment. So while I understand Commissioner Campy and perhaps Commissioner Jenkins, the need to hit pause on it, this past last meeting, if you make a motion for reconsideration, you know, normally if it was just a motion for reconsideration to suspend something, yes, you can do that. But in this case, we're following the statutory special assessment, and I don't think there's any way to, you can't reconsider, then you wouldn't be able to comply with the statute. So I'm just warning you
We're not
What that would do.
We're not tapping the brakes on actually improving Flamingo, which is the MSB thing, right? So that, that has, this is a ancillary project to that. Am I getting that? Sharon Street is ancillary to the Flamingo improvement, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So what we can do is, we can proceed with making a connection, but we can also put up some, some items, or include in the project, like a bollard or some obstruction to prevent vehicular traffic from connecting to Flamingo Drive. There are things that we can do to, or if they're more natural function, but we can make the connection
Pretty substantial barrier there now.
We can put up a barrier.
Well, there is a barrier. It's a berm and 40-foot-tall trees.
Correct.
So, okay.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Commissioner Smith.
That's fine. So, Ms. Woods, there's no way that we can continue this item to a date certain? You have to do it today? What if it, what if it were voted down today?
You can't vote it down today. And what this would be is, it's under your rules of procedure. It's a motion to reconsider. Someone who is on the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider. All that does is stop the process, and then it has to come back through the public hearing process.
That's what I need to know. I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, you can't, you couldn't.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, and you see if this works? Can we make a motion to reconsider, and then have a full agenda item, come back with our options, and?
No, sir.
Why?
Because this is a special assessment, and it has to be advertised
I understand that.
In accordance with the statutes. We won't make the notification to the tax collector in time to, yeah, we'd have, it would postpone it for, it's an MSB
Yeah.
Tu, and so we have to wait until we follow the notices, yes.
Okay. I mean, so, if that's, if that's the downside
Yes, sir.
That's a choice that Harold and the residents get to make versus us saying, "There is no choice. It's moving forward, and we have to stop."
The only, what I'm just, I want to make sure the board understands, the only thing that we come today is to stop the process. It's, you still would have to come back and Sure. I'm not saying we wouldn't. And vote the, but it's
Can I, can I? But in the interim, there's nothing that prevents us from having another agenda item that fully, because now what we're doing is on the fly, which is a really bad thing to do, right? Because we're talking about, I'm looking at the map, and there's like two areas that I'm really confused as to which is which, which is, which is in, which is out, where the berm is, where there isn't a berm, because there's two areas that don't connect. And I think it would be really helpful to have George come back with an agenda item and lay out what is, what isn't, and put it on pause.
It's, can I?
No, Don.
No, you got to put your light on.
Let's go Commissioner Campy, and then we'll go to Don, and then
Hopefully, my comments will boil this right down to completion. I'm not opposed to the paving project. I'm not opposed to the MSTU process that's already taken. I'm not looking to make a reconsideration. I am only interested in stopping the destruction of the existing berm. We don't need bollards. We don't need to spend the money to bulldoze all of that out of there. The neighbors that came this morning that were opposed to the project, several of them said they're not opposed to the paving project. It's not even their project. It's on the other side of the berm. No one was here this morning to say that they opposed the paving, and those are the people that are paying for it. So that I would leave alone. There's no reason to disrupt what we've devoted for. The only motion or action that needs to be taken today, which is not really on the fly, is leave the berm. That's it. Whatever you gain from taking the berm away is not big enough to disrupt this process. Keep everything going. Just staff would understand today, the direction is, do not remove the berm. That's it. Don't remove the berm. Leave everything else the same. You don't have to do another thing.
Go ahead.
I concur with Mr. Campy's, Commissioner Campy's analysis.
Hard to hear you.
The MSBU.
I don't know where the microphone is, but get closer to it.
All right. I concur with the Commissioner's comments that the MSBU that established the paving in front of the benefited properties can stand as it is. The ancillary project, I think, is Commissioner Jenkins', is the point of discussion. It does not need to be a part of the MSBU. It was not part of the assessment for the residents. It was not calculated into their benefit. However, it is, was an added project, part of the, of the overall program. So that can be put on hold, and either allow the Commissioner Jenkins to work with the community to see if it comes back at all, or ultimately be removed from the project without affecting the MSBU. So I don't think you need to reconsider the item. It's pretty clear today from the direction of the board that we're going to put that portion on hold, and it either will be eliminated, or it'll be brought back for the board's consideration, based upon the input that, from additional members of that community.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All I would ask Commissioner Jenkins is that the people that were here this morning that have left, someone notify them of what this conversation was, so that they're not stewing at home over the next couple of weeks, thinking that that's going to go away.
Commissioner Jenkins, last word.
I will do that personally. Matter of fact, Colleen is upstairs probably doing it as we speak. So, but
Perfect.
Because she's that efficient. But anyway, we also, please be aware that we could have a room of four or five folks that want it open.
And we'll hear from them.
So, yeah, so absolutely. So that process needs to take place, and you summarized it perfectly. Thank you very much.
Great. Do you have any other comments for today?
I think I'm good. I probably did, but
Okay, Commissioner
I used up my words.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
No, okay. Commissioner Campy?
I do. I apologize. But these people come this morning and take time out of their busy days. So a couple of things. I have some positive news, and then I want to address a couple of things that we heard this morning. The gentleman from Be a Man by Land did reach out to me. I assume he reached out to several. He also is involved in one of the local chambers. They had reached out to me, trying to set up a meeting. I, as not, I'm not an attorney, like to meet with people to try to get resolution. I did have a conversation with my attorney, and she did advise against that. And so it wasn't that I was trying to ignore this gentleman. He sort of recapped our positions pretty accurately, based on our last Palmar meeting. What I would encourage, and if motion is necessary, we'll do that, that perhaps, Ms. Woods, I know that he did contact your office, maybe in the, in the possibility of ending the litigation that's going on between his side and us, that legal and our environmental folks can sit down with him outside of a courtroom, if he's got some deadlines that he's meeting for, for tax deadlines. I'm not, I'm just, hear me through before you make a comment. Meet with him. See if there's something that can be resolved in a meeting with our environmental folks and our legal folks, because it's a legal issue now, it's not purely, and also our real estate folks. Sit down now, and try to work some deal out. Maybe if you're sitting across from each other at a table, the lawsuit can end. Some of what he's trying to do would benefit us. If he is in, if he is in control of over 2,000 acres, how much is Palmar totally? Thousands and thousands, correct? But if he has property, now I know there's more to it, because he could have bought property that has no buildable value, and now wants to trade it for buildable value property, we're not fools. But I think that if, instead of just letting it run through the court system, see if there's a possibility of sitting down with him. He came this morning. Let's take him at his word. Sit down and hear what he has to say. At least, he represents a large portion of Palmar. Not the biggest, but large. So let me check that one off. The lawyer that showed up about the interstate hauling issue, I know that that's another porcupine that we're not allowed to talk about. But if there were some issues about the extensions, I'm interested in hearing about how the extensions went. If you come back and say, "That's exactly right." And when he says at the end, when Ms. Krizda said, "Okay, your time is up," and he's like, "Well, this is a one-way conversation." Not really. He had three minutes uninterrupted to say exactly what he wanted, to say his opinion. I'd like to hear our side of it, so that I'd like to hear our side of it, so that the public can hear our side of it. This is, I get it's complicated, but when someone during public comments says something, and everyone pays attention for the nine o'clock public comments, and then they tune out the rest of it, they leave thinking that's what actually happened. So what I'm asking is that if it was a 90-day extension, we can all go back and watch the meeting, I do remember part of that. If there was a 90-day extension so that we could wrap up the bidding process, and now we've gone past that, I just want to make sure that whether he gets it or not, that the process, that our residents look at that process and say, it was fair. That's that one. The last one we're going to hear this morning, which is waste management, I heard from every public comment, I've had people make public, you know, reach out to me in my community and elsewhere, I think that situation is broader than purely a 24% increase. We have an advantage of hearing all of the details. We started this nearly a year ago, when we were in the library, when we were going through the bidding process, and back then it was more, at least in my own opinion, it was clearer than waste management was the highest one, and the rest were lower. You'd have to look, if you were sitting up here, you'd have to look, and there's a gentleman that wants to, if you were sitting here, you'd have to look at the three bidders, and maybe we can wait for these comments, but.
We haven't heard all the comments, because I still have some.
Okay, so then I'll wait on the waste management thing.
Very early in the morning.
I'll wait on the waste management thing. The last thing I want to say is two positives. Our Martin County North Little League team made it all the way to the World Series of Little League. Now, they happen to have done a remarkable job representing not just the state of Florida, not just Martin County. They happen to come out of Palm City, which is, I'm very pleased with. This was 13 young men, boys really, I mean, they're still school-aged boys, that represented us with such dignity and pride and sportsmanship. Now, the outcome did not go the way they wanted or we wanted, but they were only one of 16 Little League teams in the United States of America to make it to the, to the World Series. So, and they even in defeat handled themselves really, really well, which is another excellent example of what these young men and their coaches and their families are doing. So I invited, I spoke to one of the coaches, Mark Rogers, who's a friend and a remarkable member of our community. They're still up there, so they, we tried to invite them to come today, but they were not able to, so I would hope that the chair would invite them to come, so that we could celebrate their successes on our September 14th meeting. They've missed a ton of school, which I hear they're thrilled about, but that's something. Last time we were here, we talked about the map road ribbon cutting that we were going to have, but a tropical storm, the threat of a tropical storm made us the decision that we should postpone it, because there was a lot of things in place that we couldn't wait until the last possible second to pull the plug on. Of course, it was a beautiful morning, but we had postponed it until this Saturday, August 28th, it's from 10 to 12. We're closing the road for a short time, we're having a lot of local businesses be there, a lot of our not-for-profits to be there. So it's not just a celebration or a recognition of a job well done, that is still progressing. For Palm City residents, it's a, it's an opportunity for all residents to come and see what's happening in Palm City, and I would compliment and, and thank our staff that has worked so diligently on putting this project together. And Sunshine Land Design, when we're all hearing about how they're so hard to hire workers, and there's so few people that'll do these jobs, he had his team out there in the sweltering sun all summer long, all year long, in the pouring rain, literally working in the pouring rain to keep this project going, so I give them a lot of credit for that. And finally, we have a solemn reminder and anniversary that, and we won't meet again before this happens. On September 11th is the 20th anniversary of that terrible murderous attack on our country. I happen to be in New York City that day, so it speaks to me very, very strongly, as it does many other residents. We're having a ceremony at the Cummins Library in Palm City, where we do have a large piece of, of the steel infrastructure of the Twin Towers that's been on display there for many years. It's at 6:30 PM. We'll have a, really a very solemn tribute and reminder of what happened 20 years ago. My children were newborn babies, and now they're juniors in college. So I don't think it's a day that we should ever forget, you know, I, I'm tasked with reminding us every year about it. So I took a lot of time this morning, but I think all of the things that I mentioned were important, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurd.
Yes, there has been, in the past, some discussion among my neighbors in Rocky Point about speed limits in Rocky Point. They're currently 35 miles per hour on all the streets, except for the side streets and for Horseshoe Point Road, and our engineering department sent out 1,545 ballots to residents, asking them whether they wanted to have no change, change all the streets, change the streets to 30 miles per hour, or change them to 25 miles per hour. We had this, the supervisor of elections counted those ballots. Our return rate was 49.5%, which is excellent. No change, the leave-as-is option, 343 residents chose that, that's 44.8%. Change all the, the streets to 30 miles per hour, 266 people voted for that, that's 34.8%. And those who voted for 25 miles per hour were 156, which is 20.4%. So 44%, 45% of the people who were polled said to leave it as is. I will always rely upon the majority vote, so that's what we're going to do, we're going to leave as is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And for today, I also want to congratulate the Martin County North Little League and invite them to come in to hopefully our next meeting, so they can miss a little more school and be recognized by all of us. And I also wanted, I'm getting some, some residents that are inquiring about sand sprit boat ramp, so I asked Jim to give us just a brief update on the progress of sand sprit boat ramps.
Jim Gordon, Public Works Director. The sand sprit boat ramps, they're in design right now and permitting. What we've done for that project is, later today, you're going to hear about resilience and our resilience plan. That's a project that is affected by resilience and sea level rise. So we've taken the time to redesign that site to have docks that won't go underwater the way that they currently do, and we have king tides and, and storm surge, so it's in design, including those resilience features. We expect to get 60, 60% plans next week. We've already received our DEP permit for the project. We're working with the Army Corps to get a permit from them. They sent a request for additional information back to us in the beginning of July. We turned that around at the end of July and sent them additional information about what the project looks like. But generally, it's going to be floating docks with improved boat ramps, concrete boat ramps that are going to be at a different slope than the current one. We're going to remove some sediment that's in the boat ramp that we get some complaints from users of the boat ramp, and we're also going to remove a dip that is, is, you know, under the water at the bottom of that boat ramp that, that people have problems with.
So, so we don't need to take further action? You feel that, that state permit's going to be coming in?
DEP permit, we've already had. The Army Corps permit, it always helps to have, you know, a letter from the board asking them to expedite the review, but they have been, up till now, fairly responsive in their review.
By all means, then, if the board agrees, let's send a, a letter to the Army Corps asking that expedited review.
Chair?
Sure.
Commissioner Smith?
While he's there, a separate issue.
Okay, one more thing while he's there, and then I'll, and while you're sitting there, can you give a, a brief update on Hale Patioki Park? Because you know, we've had discussion on the bike trails, and there are some residents that are anxious to get those back open as well.
So, we're talking about the mountain bike trails that are at Hale Patioki Park, that falls within the preserve, which is managed by our Ecosystems and Restoration Management Division. The bike trails were closed after an unfortunate accident occurred temporarily while we evaluated the conditions on the trail. The field review has been completed with our insurance company, and some, some minor changes that we're working with the Airborne Mountain Bike Association, they're the folks who maintain those trails. And then we're going to add some signage out there, and then we're going to be able to reopen them. So we're hopeful that we can reopen them in, in just a week or two, once the signs are manufactured. So we already have a PO in place, it's just a matter of fine tuning that language and getting that language approved. So we, we should be able to do it within a week or two.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To that point, I heard from some folks that are involved in, I guess, a nationwide big fundraiser to ride 100 miles, and they have to ride it somewhere. I think that starts in the beginning of September. If we could find out when that event is and make sure that we're in front of that event, I think that would go a great deal.
Sure.
Be very successful.
I saw, we got an email from a gentleman who referenced that. We'll reach out to him and figure out exactly when that's starting and, and do everything in our power to try to make it.
Thank you.
Reality.
Great. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, two things. So I also understand on that topic, John Mill has also reached out to the national, there's a National Mountain Biking Association, they're also going to come in and do an assessment for us as well.
Correct. We've requested a proposal from IMBA, which is International Mountain Biking Association, so they're going to come in and help us to develop plans for the trail going into the future, future potential improvements to the trail, and also an operations and inspection program for the, the trail system. So when they're done, we're going to have a trail system that is, you know, improved from what we currently have, maximizes the use of that area, and uses signage that is universally recognized by IMBA and other mountain bike bikers. So when they come in, it'll look like trails that they've ridden in Utah or Colorado or anywhere else that, that they've done it.
And so I, I would also imagine, from a liability perspective, from where we are in the mix of this thing, and why it's kind of taken so long to get to a point where we can reopen, we will be in a better position relative to what that trail looks like, how it performs on the liability side of things.
Correct, yes. The reason it's closed is, is largely due to liability and making sure that we.
Some of the structures that are, that are maybe not as safe as they should be, perhaps, and that's part of this assessment that we're going through.
Well, it, the, the signage really is more about a, a waiver that needs to occur. There's a Florida statute that requires a waiver for, for minors. We don't have that system in place right now for them to sign off on that waiver. So that's the piece that's happening behind the scenes, that's going to be on the sign that we're talking about. There's going to be a QR code and rules of the trail, and as someone goes into that trail, they're gonna, you know, if they're a minor, they're going to need their parent or guardian to scan that code, fill out that waiver. That's consistent with what our neighbors to the south have on their mountain bike trails. We went and looked at some of the trail signage down there.
Other, thank you for all that. The, the other topic, to Commissioner Hurd's commentary on her neighborhood, I, we talked about having an agenda item, I, I think, coming back on, on neighborhoods and how we can deal with neighborhoods and speed limits in neighborhoods. And in talking to Lisa in, on, I always want to call it our engineering department, engineering department, they, she has, or you all have decided or defined that it is possible for us to designate a neighborhood as a neighborhood speed limit versus having 30 or 35 or 25 in different speed limits within the neighborhood?
Yeah, that's my understanding. There is a way to designate a neighborhood, a speed limit for an entire neighborhood.
So is, is the agenda item going to bring, bring back sort of an assessment of those older neighborhoods that that might be applicable to? Because I have a couple in, in my end of the world, there may be some down south in Harold's, you know, neighborhood. Will we get that as part of the conversation?
We'll certainly include that, yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And then I have one more on the comments. Commissioner Campy brought up, and the public speaker earlier is at Gaza, and I actually, in his error, I actually did phone him back before receiving any notification, direction from legal counsel, because I try to respond to everybody that corresponds to our office. So I actually did speak with Mr. Gaza on the phone, and it's very complicated. I would love to also get an update from legal on where that litigation is, but I agree with Commissioner Campy that it's worthwhile to, you know, if possible, sit down and see, is there a way to, to end this, and are there other options in purchasing the land? So that's my two cents on that. And other than that, we have now already reached our time, I'm sorry, Ms. Krista or Ms. Woods, do you have comments? We have reached our 10:30 closed captioning break time, so we are going to take that break, and when we come back, we are going to proceed on with the PH, public hearing number one. We will take the consent poll later in the day, and, and we have a 10:30 preset, which is departmental number six. So we will see you back in 10 minutes at 10:40. So, we will see you back in 10 minutes at 10:40.
Okay. Welcome back to our August 24th Board of County Commission meeting. And we are back from our 10:30 break. And we are going to take our 10:00 AM preset, which is Departmental Number Six. For those in the gallery with some other items, we're going to take that item, the board appointments, which will be very quickly, and move on to public hearing, just so you know the order of the day. We are request for MOU with the District Board of Trustees of Indian River State College for a proposed charter high school to be located on county property, presented by Don Donaldson.
Thank you, Sheriff Heatherington, Commissioners. My name is Don Donaldson, Deputy County Administrator, and we're very pleased to present to you today. It's simply an agreement to agree, but this is a first step and a significant project that our own Indian River State College has brought to us. And in the audience, we have Beth Gaskin, our Vice President for Student Success, and Alex Enzalone, our Chastain Campus President, and of course, our very own Marsha Powers, our School Board, who's been on the Steering Committee for this charter high school with the Indian River State College. So, essentially, there is a proposal to build a charter high school adjacent to Indian Town to serve both Indian Town and Martin County that will benefit students in providing both certificate programs, a high school diploma, along with other skills that would provide them direct access to workforce skills, welding, various trades and other skills that are needed today in our construction and other industries locally, something that we don't have currently. And we're excited to, I think, to be able to participate in that. And what's being asked of Martin County is to be able to provide some property. And attached to the agenda item is a property that Martin County owns, 107 acres. It is also currently encumbered with an option to lease with the Martin County Fair Association. And the idea is to take approximately 25 acres out on the western boundary with frontage on Citrus Boulevard that would serve as the high school, and also provide approximately five acres for a solar field that would benefit students, not only the energy use for the high school, but also training opportunities for the students in regards to solar batteries, electricity, et cetera. The Fair Association in addition is also interesting in being, having access to the solar field for similar training opportunities for those perhaps not of high school age, but others that would be in regards to their plans for the Fair Association. We have had discussions with the Fair Association and they are supportive of the school. We will, subject to approval today, which is this memorandum of understanding, which is attached, that commits the board to negotiate a lease agreement with the college, the Board of Trustees of the college. And it also allows time to do due diligence in terms of the property evaluation, providing a survey of the exact boundaries of the lease. And we would bring back this lease, we expect, before the end of the year is the estimated timing, which would have all of the commitments that we would make along with the college and also the terms of the lease. So, this gets it kicked off. It's also a necessary component. The college, Ms. Gaskin has, and Ms. Powers, I believe, have artfully found a donor that they've been working with to provide $40 million towards this project, which is quite significant. And there is an interest to get this done quickly so that a donor can see it under construction as soon as possible. And for that, we want to facilitate that to the greatest that we can. And so, with that, it's really a pretty simple contract in that respect that Ms. Woods and the lawyers of IRSC put together. It's the first step that outlines the commitment for us to work together and then bring back the formal lease. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions. And I'm sure in regards to the, all the benefits that the school will provide will be much more artfully presented to you by Ms. Gaskin or Ms. Powers. And so, I'll let you invite them to the podium should you desire. Thank you.
Great. I would like to, at this time, invite Indian River State College Beth Gaskin to come and introduce Alex and some of the things that you're working on.
Can you hear me from here? Oh, thank you. Hi, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's great to be with you this morning. We are very excited here at IRSC, grateful to Don, to Ms. Woods, and to others for working with us on this memorandum of understanding. I do want to introduce you to my new colleague, Dr. Alex Enzalone, who has taken over as the Chastain Campus President for IRSC. I am on the Fort Pierce campus now, but don't worry, still a local Martin Countyan in my heart. So, we are very excited about the possibility of bringing education to Indian Town, more education, high school education. As you know, IRSC is a very successful charter school in Martin County already, Clark Advanced Learning Center, which takes advantage of dual enrollment opportunities for those students. We would like to do something very similar in Indian Town, but also leverage dual enrollment for career opportunities for workforce programs, for ensuring that we are able to provide our students with the education that gets them jobs that they need, and we want them to stay local. We want them to stay here in Martin County. So, this is obviously our very first step. We have had some wonderful visioning and planning with our School Board Chair, Marsha Powers, with Kevin Powers, with other members of the Indian Town community and interested parties. This is something that I have yet to find a person who is not excited about bringing this kind of opportunity to our Indian Town residents. So, we're grateful for the opportunity to talk about this land today. Certainly open to any questions that you might have. And right now, we're really in the visioning stages of the project, so I don't have a lot of details that I can provide you. I look forward to doing that whenever we come back with a full lease agreement later on this year.
Okay, great. Commissioner Campy?
Ms. Gaskin, thank you very much for coming this morning with such exciting news. Are we going to be hearing from Mr. or Mrs. Powers?
Certainly can.
Just to add a little more detail, I know that it's still in the preliminary stages, but it's such an exciting project. Whatever tidbits you can share, I think people will be glad to hear them, and then I'll have a couple of questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Campy. Thank you all for having us today. It's a very exciting project for Indian Town. Bringing this educational opportunity, not just to Indian Town, but our entire community to offer workforce training so that our students are career-ready when they leave high school is just such an amazing opportunity. And I look at it really as an opportunity for Martin County, not just Indian Town. It just happens to be located there.
In District Five, I'm pretty sure as well, which is, I'm just saying.
Barely, barely.
No, it's completely, it's 100% in District Five.
Were we districting?
On the edge, in the middle, it's the same. Thank you. Couple of quick comments, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
True, for the moment.
Yeah, that's true.
It's in District Five.
That's a story for another day about redistricting. The career technical training portion, I know that our business community and our traditional school system has always talked about that. And we've been very fortunate to have academies at each of the different high schools that offer a smaller kind of a structure, but they were offset by more traditional educational experience. I think. I think, you know, we're all very, any of us that have had kids that have gone through the school system, which I have, the Clark has always been a really remarkable opportunity for Martin County students to have that. It starts in 10th grade, but it had a very specific set of what that student would gain, so it reached out to a very specific student. This, on the other hand, really is so broad for a group of students that will have an opportunity to feel like something is really being focused specifically on them. And where it is located, I like that Ms. Powers said that it is for every resident. We're highlighting Indian Town, rightfully so. But it's for any Martin County student. It seems like it's far away, but the Fair Association folks will tell you through their research, it's just as quick to get from, you know, Stewart to this location as it is to get up to the mall in timing. And so it is not out of, like, out in the boondocks. It is very much accessible to any resident. And I know that I've had the opportunity to meet with you all and was there the day that the angel flew down from heaven to bless us with his lifetime of hard work and to put some of that money towards the county. I know that it's not completely structured yet, but having the opportunity to hear him speak, I believe that he'll do it. And for the residents of Martin County, we've heard long that elementary schools are $50 million or $30 million, and middle schools are $50 million, and high schools could be $100 million. And the way with the collaboration of IRSC, who already has a successful track record here in Martin County, to do that and have an individual, a husband and wife in this case, write a check to really offset a lion's share of it is a dream come true. So I wish there were balloons and streamers. We'll have to do that next time. But one of the things that, two things, this property, we've already talked for a long, long time with the Fair Association, and I know they have a full plan on what their vision is here, and it is grand, and it is fantastic. I think that this is a remarkable collaboration with the fair, that the things that the fair, beyond the two weeks or the 10 days that most people think about the fair, the Fair Association is a year-round enterprise, and a lot of their focus is on the things that this school will specifically work towards. So what a wonderful marriage for them. And I appreciate, some of them are here, I appreciate the fact that they see it as a collaboration as well, not as like, hey, we're losing a portion of the property that we've already been, you know, given. But then the thing that I will leave with, which is, I think, very, very intuitive of IRSC and this enterprise, is during the day that this will be a traditional student education facility. But there is conversation that in the evenings, adults will have the opportunity to either enhance their skill set that they already have or learn new skill sets. Because the way of doing business as an employee anywhere in, I guess, in the world, has completely changed. And there's like a pivot from real corporate office jobs that, like, most of people, like, I worked for 20 years in New York City and went in every single day and worked in an office in Manhattan. That's over for a lot of, now through the pandemic. A lot of people have been left wondering, like, what am I supposed to do into the future? And so I like the concept that this won't just be a high school for students. It'll be a school and a training facility for grownups. Well done. I could, obviously you could tell, I could not be happier. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
So I had stole a little bit of what I was gonna say, which is fine.
I tried to go first.
Why, you went first. It's always good to get that light on first. I think the exciting part for me in this, probably 15 years ago or so, when the DRIs were being talked about, 10, 12 years ago out in Indian Town, there was conversation about a school, whether it was a high school or something else, being co-located maybe with the DRI. And I had always thought at the time, even back then, we were having, I mean, there's probably been three or four conversations about moving the fairgrounds. Man, if you could ever co-locate those things together from an infrastructure side of things and a sharing of costs of just raw parking, water sewer, things that make sites very expensive if you're doing them one-off. But the idea that you're gonna have two things co-locating, at least, God only knows, Shea probably has 50 things that are gonna collate. But you couldn't ask for a better idea. And like, it was there 15 years ago, but no one really knew how that would ever happen, per se. And then the DRIs kind of went away. And now it's back. And it's back in a really exciting, very, very cool kind of a way. So kudos to all of you. Kudos to Indian Town. It's just super exciting, and I can't wait to see it come out of the ground. And I can't wait to see the fair be a part of it all and have this site. So I hope, in the planning side, because sometimes that's where I end up going in my thought process, I hope on the site planning side, we really figure out how to make things work together, I mean, as much as possible, because I think there's some enormous scale of opportunity. And on both sides, there'll be things that the fair can benefit from having the school next door and vice versa. And for me, that's, I think, the most exciting part. So thank you all for what you've done, and very, very cool stuff.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Great, okay. And I will just add on, I don't know that I could add much more to what Commissioner Campy and Commissioner Smith have, and I echoed all their sentiments. And I will say, as a parent, the traditional dual enrollment that the school offers has always been very prevalent. And this career, I think this will take the career workforce dual enrollment program to a whole new level. And it's a program that is really needed. And, you know, we're always saying that we need other training opportunities, our kids need other paths. And I think this is going to take that, those dual enrollment opportunities for workforce to a whole new level. Commend you for doing it and wish you the utmost success. And with that, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, Donna, we are going to take the board and committee appointments. Number one, Neighborhood Advisory Committee, NAC appointments.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you got a poll. You turn in your sheet? Five here, one in one.
Like a quiz this morning.
So Donna, would you like to introduce the item? Well...
I have a question, if you don't mind, Ms. Gordon. Madam Chair, do you mind?
Let her go ahead and introduce the item and then go with your question.
I'm Gordon for Administration. This is for the six Neighborhood Advisory Committees to appoint several members. Golden Gate is up first. There were two terms expiring, and we have two qualified applicants.
Okay, so we would, I'd be looking for, we're going to take a motion for each one of these NACs? And we didn't have a voting sheet for that one, correct?
Correct, there's two positions, two applicants.
Okay, so I would be looking for a motion to approve Caitlin Palmieri and Sadia Safridi's.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
For Hope Sound, there's three terms expiring and three people qualified, but only one can be appointed because all three of them live within a mile, and only two members can be within a mile on each committee.
Okay, so are you still awaiting one more voting sheet?
Still waiting on a voting sheet, so...
And who would that be?
The reason I didn't, it didn't say, as it normally does, pick. It didn't say pick. So I just thought this, and I read through that like two or three times. It was a lot of non-voting. And then I read that in Palm City, one of the names on this list had resigned. He's the incumbent had resigned.
Well, he wasn't going to reapply. He was going to resign. But now he qualifies in another position.
But in the agenda item, it said resigned.
So pick one from Hope Sound.
I did all those already.
Okay, so we're waiting one voting sheet, and then we'll tally the votes for Hope Sound and take a motion.
Okay, for Hope Sound, Mrs. Emily Thorson received four votes.
Move approval of Emily Thorson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion moving approval of Emily Thorson for Hope Sound NAC by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So moving on to Jensen Beach Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Jensen Beach, pretty much the same thing. There were three positions I needed filled, and two of the four are within a mile. And we already have another member within a mile. So I'm asking that you reappoint Ann Cactus and Ron Rose for terms to begin September 10th and end September 2025, and Ron Rose's term to end November 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Okay.
And the person within a mile that received the most votes was Jerry Compton. And his term would begin immediately and end August 23rd of '25.
So are you gonna include that in your motion? And Commissioner Hurd? Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Old Palm City.
Okay. A little bit more complicated.
See that, more complicated?
There are six qualified applicants and only five positions. Three of the qualified applicants are within a mile, and you can only appoint two of those if you so desire. I'll go through the list of how many received. I didn't, you didn't vote for anybody, Commissioner Hurd?
I was confused also.
I have majorities. I really don't, I have majorities.
Okay.
We may have a tie, I haven't quite counted yet. I'll start from the bottom. Mr. Surley received four votes.
Searle.
Searle. Mr. Chuck Smith received four votes. Dr. Rex Centel received four votes. And Mr. Douglas Legler received four votes.
So that's only four people.
Okay, and then Mrs. Paige Loringer received three votes. But unfortunately, you can't appoint Legler, Loringer, and Surley at the same time.
Okay. I said this was gonna be a quick item.
There are your rules.
Okay.
Touche.
Some of us didn't make them.
So you can't have Searle, Legler, and Loringer? You're gonna only have one of those?
Two of those.
Well, two of them got four votes.
Correct.
So...
They're in.
They're in.
So that was Searle and Legler.
That's correct.
Yes.
So do we need to vote again on...
Well, that would leave Mr. Oscar Torres, who only received one vote, would make the other three. No, I need five of the six.
So so far, we have Searle, Loring.
Not Loring.
Mr. Smith. Centel.
Smith, Legler, Smith, and Centel. And Searle.
And Searle. So we need a vote for the additional fifth member.
Yes, there's, only seems to be one possibility.
Yeah.
And that's Mr. Torres?
Yep.
Okay, so then we need a motion, then.
Moves Searle, Smith, Centel, Legler, and Torres. Are those okay?
Searle, Smith...
Centel, Legler, and Torres.
Okay, and about the terms, I would ask that you appoint the three incumbents, Searle, Smith, and Legler, or Centel. To the three terms, begin September 12th because the incumbent's terms won't end until September and end the 20 of '25. One would begin immediately and end September of '25, and one would begin immediately and end September 23.
I would make Mike Searle end September of '23.
So are you okay with that in your motion? Is that a second by Commissioner Campy?
Sure. Second.
Okay, are we clear on our members?
Yes.
And their terms? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Campy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and we have one more. We have, oh, Porcelano Neighborhood and Advisory.
Both the incumbents' terms were going to expire and both reapplied, Mary Beth Conn's and Edward Butch Olson Jr.
Okay, looking for a motion for...
Move approval.
Very good. A motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Rio?
There was four terms were going to expire. May have been a vacancy in there. But two incumbents, Jamie Newhart and Michael Reedling, reapplied.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Donna. Okay. Now we are moving on to public hearing number one, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of the Final Assessment Resolution for Fiscal Year 2022, Solid Waste Assessment and Certification of the Special Assessment Role to the Tax Collector, presented by Sam Amerson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Sam Amerson, Utilities and Solid Waste Department Director. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of the Final Assessment Resolution for Fiscal Year 2022, Solid Waste Assessment, and also certification of the Special Assessment Role to the Tax Collector. On July 13th, 2021, the board adopted the initial assessment resolution for FY22 Solid Waste Assessment as required in Section 151.52 of the General Ordnance of Martin County Code, also as required in Section 151.53. A copy of the preliminary assessment role has been prepared and is available for public inspection at the Utilities and Solid Waste Department offices. Additionally, as required by the terms in Chapter 151 and Florida law, notice of public hearing has been published and also mailed by first-class mail to each property owner proposed to be assessed, notifying such property owner of the opportunity to be heard today. The solid waste MSPU services provide a service to approximately 48,053 residential units for 2022. The single-family dwelling unit rate for FY22 for the MSPU services to be proposed by Waste Management will be an annual fee of $389.69. And that's comprised of $262.44 for collection, $102.32 for disposal cost, and $24.93 for administrative cost. As far as legal sufficiency and review, Chris Traver, the county's Special Assessment Council, has reviewed the resolution and also the agenda item summary, and has found those that confirm that the form of each of those documents are proper. The staff recommendation is threefold. It will be moved at the board receives public comment at today's hearing. Moved at the board adopt the final assessment resolution for the solid waste MSPU. And lastly, moved at the board certify and approve the special assessment role to the tax collector. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay, thanks. I don't know what to do about the microphone, but since we can't tell you to speak into the mic, you're probably just gonna have to speak more loudly when staff comes to the podium with that new microphone. So this is a public hearing, and some folks spoke this morning. I have one public speaker form. If you spoke this morning during public comment, you cannot speak again on this item. But if you have not spoken and you wish to make public comment, then please fill out a form and give that to the bailiff. And I have one public comment form for this item, David Mixon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is David Mixon, and I'm a resident of the Eaglewood community of Hope Sound. I've worked in the food production industry for 42 years, and I'm very familiar with solid waste and recycling collection and disposal. Unlike most people in this room, as my guess, I've actually visited a recycling center and saw firsthand how little of the single-stream collection system actually gets recycled. That's what I would lead with, but I have two key points I'm trying to make here. The first one has to do with requests to increase the rates. This proposal to increase the annual recycling and waste removal cost to $389.69 per single-family residence or $75.32 per residence is a 24% increase. You've heard that earlier. There are 300 residences in Eaglewood, and I'm not speaking for that as a community. I'm just letting you know that how many people live there. That means that Waste Management would be collecting an additional $22,596 per year for this over-55 community. I believe this is an unacceptable increase for this community for mostly retired residents. And as a matter of fact, you might have read or learned about, Port St. Lucie Council, city council unanimously approved at a recent meeting increasing their preliminary solid waste service assessment rate by 1%, not 24%. Now, granted, the contracts may be different, but it just points a difference. So, my question to you, and I hope you get it, will explain it. What's the justification for Waste Management's 24% increase in the collection and disposal costs? And is this an increase effective for just one year or for the life of the contract? And my second point has to do with the recycling totes that are now being delivered to the communities. Apparently, there may be as many as 48,000 of these totes going out. As I mentioned, Eaglewood is an over-55 community with a significant seasonal population, and many residents are over 75 years old and have been using small recycled totes for years. And many have special carts that they've either designed or purchased in order to hold those totes. The small recycled totes have an 18-gallon capacity. And I see my time's up?
That's your warning.
Oh, that's my warning, okay. The new totes are at a 64-gallon capacity, which is three and a half times larger. Some residents don't have the extra space in their garages for these larger bins.
Now, your time is up.
Now, my time's up. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Let's, we have one more public comment? Just state your name for the record.
Amy Pritchett. As the gentleman before me asked, I'd also like to know, is that additional cost of 24% over the eight years, is it sealed? And after the eight years, I believe there's a contingency that it can be approved for another six years. I just want some clarification on that and if the 24% increase is sealed for eight years. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further public comment, then it comes back to the Board. Does anybody have questions for staff? Commissioner Campi.
Thank you. Mr. Amerson, you heard some of the comments that were made either this morning or just now. Some of them are questions that I wanted. I have had the opportunity to have my own conversations with you privately, and this, like I was starting to say this morning, this has been a long process of decision-making that started. When was the first time we brought this up? You came before the Board when we were still over at the library. How long ago was that?
It's been over a year, I believe.
It's hard to hear you. Can you?
I'm sorry, sir. It's been over a year.
Yeah, so we've been at this for a year. And can you give us a little bit of how that process traditionally works so that residents understand that it's a whole process? It's not that we made a quick decision. I understand what it is, but not just the folks that are here, the folks that are watching at home. How does it traditionally happen?
Sure. Well, the Waste Management agreement that you've enjoyed for about 30 years was coming to an end on September 30th of this year. And so, we developed an RFP, that's a request for proposals, to provide those services. We wanted to maintain a high quality, high level of service. We also wanted to look at new equipment, new fleet, and some other improvements like 64-gallon recycled carts. So we developed that RFP. We also developed a draft agreement that goes along with that. That gets advertised publicly. We went through the process. It was difficult this past year because of COVID. We had a lot of delays in the process, but we did get through that. We received presentations. We looked at two other firms. Three firms submitted bids in total on that RFP. We analyzed that. It was the Board's decision that with what was occurring locally, other communities nationwide even, labor shortages, driver shortages, we've heard some nightmare stories. It was the Board's directive to have staff reject those bids and then negotiate with Waste Management.
Let me stop you right there so we can jump in for our portion at that moment in time. That was an issue that had come up, and there was some talk of it this morning that Waste Management was the highest of the three. I personally voted for Waste Management, and I'll tell you why. And if you go back to, not you, but if anyone wanted to go back to the commission meetings, they're all recorded. We're not discussing apples for apples, in my opinion, because we're not talking about purchasing garbage trucks where you could go, like the reference to the car dealership this morning. We're not talking about buying $100,000 Cadillac at a dealership and then going to a different dealership and buying the exact same Cadillac for $50,000. We're talking about a service that two other people, the two other bidders that came in lower, I don't believe were apples to apples because, and it gets very detailed, and it was one of the larger contracts that at least I remember completely reviewing because it's twofold. One, it's the, one of, if not the largest contract that the Commissioners will approve in terms of actual total dollars. It's multi-millions of dollars. And two, like the Speaker just said, it's for many, many years. So I really went through it very carefully. And one of the companies that were also bidding was a familiar name, a local name, who is recently, and not to disparage them because we don't know what it's like to run different companies internally and in different communities, but if you read in the newspaper, there's a lot of struggling going on in other communities. And one of the things I think that's a huge advantage for us as residents, but might be a disadvantage to Waste Management, is they do a very good job. So people become very expectant of that job and rely on it and don't have a lot of problems. Now, when residents do have problems, I'm sure my colleagues will tell you, we get the phone calls. I have a couple of situations in Palm City Farms where some neighbors are very, very disrespectful of their neighbors, and they throw out mountains of garbage, and it gets dispersed, and it's all over the streets, and animals go through it, and residents take photographs of the picture, of the mess and send it to me. And what I do is either personally or my aide calls Jeff Saban, who is a Waste Management representative, their government liaison, I don't know what his title is. And then, that day, I will receive an email back from the people that emailed me in the morning to say, "Thank you very much for cleaning that up." Now, I didn't clean up anything, but that's a service that Waste Management gives to us, almost real-time customer service that is important to us that try to do constituent services. So that's first. They've also had a 30-year track record in Martin County. One of the other companies had only been doing business in the United States of America for a short time, had only been doing business in Florida for about a couple of years, and in only a few communities. I don't know if you know, Mr. Amerson, how many communities or contracts does Waste Management have in the state of Florida?
Numerous contracts.
Numerous, but Mr. Saban? Come to the mic, please. I think this is an important distinction for people to understand. And while he's coming, I'll tell you...
To invite Jeff Saban from Waste Management?
Yeah.
Answer some questions?
To answer questions about Waste Management? Is that unacceptable? Okay, come on up. While he's coming, I'll tell you that one of the companies I did my research on that was bidding against Waste Management had only a couple of communities in Florida. And when you Googled them, the contracts there, they had 15,000 complaints from residents in a single year. And they had been fined by the municipalities for not living up to the contracted requirements that they had. How many contracts do you have? Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, for the record, Jeff Saban, Government Affairs Manager for Waste Management.
How many contracts does Waste Management have, only in Florida?
And it's a fluid number, so please...
All right, right...
We have literally hundreds of contracts.
Hundreds.
Across the state of Florida, hundreds. And also, from an employee base, asset base, we have literally millions and millions of dollars invested, not only in our assets, but our over 3,000 employees.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted the contract side. We all get that it's employees. So that's why when this originally came up and we looked at Waste Management versus the other two, one is struggling, and the other was nearly brand-new to Florida. So are we going to invest a 30-year, or 15-year contract worth millions and millions of dollars on someone we're not even sure? The other issue is that when you get really into, sadly, into the minutia of the contract, there are certain communities in Martin County that don't put their pails to the street, correct? Mr. Amerson?
That's true. That's correct.
How do those pails get emptied? What does Waste Management, our current supplier, our current service provider, do?
Are you speaking to the backdoor services?
Yeah. Because most people have never heard of that before, so can you explain backdoor?
Communities, there are several gated communities that prefer not to put cans on the street for whatever reason, and so it's uniform throughout that community. They contract for additional fee with Waste Management, and they'll do the valet service.
Okay, so now it's not available to everyone. They pay extra for that.
That's correct.
But were the other two contractors that were the bidders, were they offering that as a service?
I don't recall.
I do. They weren't. They weren't. So those neighborhoods would all have to, that would end, and they would have to change their whole mindset and their whole HOA procedures on how they did. And it was several, and it wasn't just high-end. It was a lot of neighborhoods, so I have to factor that in. So then, let's get into the concept of the trucks. I did receive some emails where people said, "We don't care if they're getting compressed natural gas trucks" and the rest of it. What, and this was more of a Mr. Donaldson question, Waste Management didn't just say, "Hey, we want you guys to purchase new trucks for us." We were pushing pretty hard on the contract on the quality and the level of appearance and maintenance of their existing fleet, correct?
Yes, the contract required the purchase of all new vehicles to be available for use at the beginning of the contract is the requirement.
Now, was that, that they wanted that to be in the contract, or we wanted that to be in the contract?
We wanted that in the contract.
And why do you figure, like, why, you were part of the architect of the original proposal. Why was that so important?
It's important that we have equipment on the road that is in good working order. And since it's a long-term contract, you want them to have a new equipment. And it also specified how long they could, how many years that equipment could be in service before it's required to be replaced. So those provisions were in there to ensure that that we don't have equipment breaking down and spilling hydraulic fuel and things like that just because it's being, it may meet the contractual requirement to pick up service, but if it's breaking down a lot, it's not providing the service that we want.
Thank you. The other thing, let's get into the recycling bin, if you don't mind. City of Stewart switched to a single, and Mr. Amerson, you were at the City of Stewart at the time when you were involved in making that transition from the two individual rectangular totes. The City of Stewart, many, how many years ago did they switch?
It's been 15-plus years.
15 years ago, they switched from the double to the single stream, similar to what our residents are going to get, correct?
Yes.
Same, same exact pail?
Yes.
64-gallon on wheels? The concept of how much recycling does that really generate? I remember I was here then when it switched over, and the numbers of additional recycling went up tremendous. Am I wrong?
It did go up. And that's one thing that, it will go up for a period of time, and that's like other programs. After a while, you'll start to see a little slide off of that. We've got to re-educate, re-promote, and so, but it does provide for additional recycling over the bins.
Okay. I was leery of the size, the size of the tote myself. I have 80, mid-80-year-old parents that live in Palm City and are the customers that we had heard from some other people. They, my mother and father don't generate a tremendous amount of trash and don't generate a tremendous amount of recyclables. And my dad would, you know, pull the rectangular things, no wheels, either carry them or drag them down to the street. And we talked about that, and I was in his garage this weekend, and we looked. I see at the fairgrounds, there's a mountain of totes that are there, and some folks had already reached out to me, said they're getting them. The footprint of the tote, of the wheeled cart, you know, the new receptacle, if you will, is equal to or smaller than the footprint, footprint, not volume, just the footprint, is the same, if not smaller, than the two totes.
It's approximately the same.
Now, I did the same thing. I have a little PVC framework that I made that I could put the totes into. But when they're full, they're very difficult to get out, and most of the time, I have to go and reassemble my PVC cart. When I said to my parents, and this is just anecdotal, "What do you feel about having to do the recycling?" He's like, "Well, I don't have enough recycling to fill that." And, "Look, I'm not rich. My parents aren't wealthy. $75 a year is an increase." But my dad says, "Well, you know, we pay school taxes, and we don't have any kids in school." And I said, "That's an interesting point, that yes, some people will not necessarily get $75 worth of additional value, or even the $389 worth of value out of that contract." But the five of us have to make that contract singularly for everyone in Martin County. So for older people that say, or younger couples or single people that say, "I'm never going to get my money's worth out of this garbage contract because I don't generate that much trash." Well, your neighbors might, and you also pay for school taxes to support the community. So that's where I was coming from with that. And then the last thing I wanted to say, our percentages of recycling in Martin County, even with the current two tote, we have pretty high percentages of recycling, correct?
Yes, we do.
Both in construction debris, vegetative waste, and regular household recycling. We're higher than average? Am I wrong?
I don't know the exact figure statewide, but we do have a good recycling percentage.
Now, I had an opportunity to tour with you recently how that system works out at the landfill. Is that open, like, I don't mean to put this on your staff, but are tours allowed? If people wanted to actually come to the landfill?
We can provide for tours.
Yeah, so if people are interested, I know there was a gentleman that said he had toured one. Most people, that's not on their wish list, but if it is, I would encourage people to come and see how well it works.
It's an interesting tour. It's very educational.
My final comment, Madam Chair, and the reason I'm speaking so long, it's a big deal. And I want people to feel, if possible, to feel comfortable in the decision-making. We get four pickups per week. Two are household trash, one is recycling, and one is vegetative waste, correct? Now, some people put out zero vegetative waste, doesn't benefit them. Some people don't put out two days' worth of garbage and could potentially hold their garbage and have one day. There's a lot of talk about a one-day pickup. But that's what's been happening by accident in our neighboring community. A one-day pickup, excuse me, a once-a-week pickup, that sometimes, based on labor shortages, it's once every two weeks. And in most communities, you have to store your garbage pails in your garage, so now you're going to have that household waste in the garage for longer. How much does it cost per pickup? Do you gentlemen have the?
The new contract for those four pickups per week is $1.87 per pickup.
For the week?
No, just for each pickup.
Each day is $1.87?
That's correct.
Okay. And so what was the increase from what it was to what it's going to be?
I believe that was $0.36 per pickup.
Okay, and that's, you know, whether people would agree or disagree, that's where I used as my information to make the decision that the contract was appropriate. Waste Management has a 30-year career in Martin County in giving us a level of service. It's a service contract. It's not a purchasing contract. And I didn't want to be the guy that bet on an unknown to give us the next 15 years of service that could, you know, three or four years in, completely cave in on itself, and then we're stuck with them. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Okay. So we have a motion. I have just a few comments based on some of the residents' comments this morning and Commissioner Campi. A lot of what you said, I agree, but, you know, from the beginning of this process, you know, keep in mind, the county hired a consultant to write this request for proposals, and that was what you described earlier a year or so ago, and... and that was what you described earlier, a year or so ago, and, you know, that consultant put in exactly what we were asking for. So when we received those bids, and they weren't apples to oranges, it's because that provider, Waste Management, knew the service they were delivering. And the other, I believe, bidders were bidding on what was on the paper, right or wrong, and our legal staff has always said, they don't want the commissioners involved in those RFP processes, which I always disagree with, because some of this could have been, I think, prevented on taking input on some of these RFPs, because when we put it in that request for proposal and bidders are bidding on it, then they're providing what was requested in that bid. I personally don't agree with everything that we put in that request for proposal. These bidders provided it. There's a cost associated with, you know, changing, converting all to natural gas to having these functions, and overall, it's a good environmental progression, but there's a cost associated. Even when we went back to negotiating, I think we could have phased in, I agree that Waste Management provides the best level of service, and residents overwhelmingly are happy. We could have phased in the assessment. 24% in one year is, I think, a pretty significant increase, particularly in the times that we're in. I do want to say, too, a couple of the speakers this morning, and I think unfairly somehow insinuated that Waste Management is taking this increase and somehow lining their pockets, but in fact, they are providing the service that the county and that RFP requested. So they are not, you know, and somehow fattening their wallets with this service. The county asked them, "This is what we want the level of service to be," and they responded to that. So that, I believe, is unfair. I also believe that, you know, it could have been phased in better, and I've been fairly consistent on this topic from the beginning, and I'm not going to support it, but I do support that we have a tremendous contractor, and they provide a good level of service. I just think that 24% in a single year for residents to bear, and we could have thought through the process, and that's particularly why I'm not supporting it. Commissioner Jenkins?
One, there was a couple of things, but one question that Ms. Pritchett asked was, how long is this cost fixed for? The term of the contract is...
It's an eight-year contract with a six-year renewal.
Okay.
Initially, we mentioned the increase to the $389.69 annually. The contract has provisions for CPI adjustments annually, but with a ceiling of 5% and a floor of 2%. Historically, we've been at about 2% to 2.5% over the last 10 years. And so we wanted to use the CPI for fuel adjustments and other labor adjustments, but we did want to put a cap on that, in case we had a wild year that went 6% or 7% inflation.
Right.
CPI, that we at least had a ceiling, but in those times when there's a 1%, 0.7%, we thought that was a bit on the low side, and so to keep that evened out and more predictable, we put a floor of 2%. But we will look at that annually.
And the existing rate that we have now, how long has that been in effect? I mean, some of the speakers are saying a 24% increase over one year. Where, that's really not a fair, the rate has increased, I would assume in the old contract through small increments of a CPI, correct?
Yes, it has.
So this is, I don't know how to verbalize that, so I'll just leave that alone, but it's just not fair to say that it's a 24% increase when the, it's a completely different...
Yeah, if we backed up and we averaged that over the last 10 to 20 years and going forward, it would average out to be much less than that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
Not to belabor this project, but there's two things I thought should introduce. As one, in the RFP, you did have staff that had to split decision when this came to the board on that review, when you asked us to negotiate. The other key piece of it is that the amount of service was increased under the Waste Management contract to include more routes, we have more vegetation pickup, and you also didn't fail to mention the bulk service, where people put out everything from, you know, tearouts of their house to pianos at the side of the road that we pick up on occasion. And then lastly, I just want to point out that this contract and this MSBU includes not only Waste Management pickup, but we also have the recycling. And under our last contract, we used to get people paying us for recycling, and now it's gone just the opposite. In South Florida, they're having to pay the recycling. We've at least been able to negotiate with our recycling operation. In St. Lucie County, well, they'll take it for free, and if they sell it over a certain amount, we'll get paid back. So there is a lot that has changed in the waste and management industry, if you will. Recycling was a huge item, with China changing their whole practices on their thing. The other thing that's really hitting the market right now is trucking costs and getting drivers. And so we really increased the amount of service so that we didn't have people getting trash picked up at 9:00 at night. We wanted it picked up. So there are more routes, there are more trucks, and the other, last thing I'll point out is that on those weeks that you have a holiday where they miss a pickup, they're still going to pick up that twice a week in most contracts. If you miss a pickup due to a holiday, you just only get once that week. So there are some things in here for our contract that I think are a great benefit to our residents. I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks. Commissioner Smith?
Just to add on, Don, a tad of that, you know, the flip side to all of this is that of the one contract that we have, and probably the largest contract that we have, failure to provide or to deliver this service is the worst level of anything that exists in our community, short of our sanitation, or our sewer departments failing or something like that. I mean, we as a community are very fortunate, I think, to live in the type of community we live in, and the expectation that those services happen and happen without interruption, for all the years I've been doing this, is paramount to what we do. And on the rare occasions, if I get five calls in my office a year that there's something that didn't get picked up, I'd say that's a lot, and that goes, I think, in a major way to the success that both we, our staff, and Waste Management have worked to understand how that delivery of service works in this community. At the end of the day, there's a whole bunch of men and women that provide that service to us out in the community on days that none of us want to be out doing anything, and every day, we come home in the afternoon, whatever we put out in the morning's gone, and the bottom of the pail is empty, and we take it back to wherever we put it, and we don't think much about it. But the folks that actually deliver that service, to me, is well worth the contract that we have put together and the successes, I think, of how we handle that piece of our community and Waste Management, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4 to 1 with Commissioner Heatherington dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving on to public hearing number two. It's a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance amending Division 8 of Article 4 in the Land Development Regulations Regarding Mining Standards, and that is going to be presented by Michelle Cullen. Good morning.
Hello, good morning.
Oh, okay. We're right here.
You're fine.
Thank you. Got it. Okay, new mics. Good morning, everyone. Michelle Cullen, Development Review Administrator with the Public Works Department.
Michelle, with our new microphone, you're going to have to really speak up.
Will we not have dialogue in the chamber, please, sir?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please, if you're going to talk, you've got to go outside.
Okay, just speak as loudly as you can, Michelle.
I will try my best. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Michelle Cullen, Development Review Administrator with the Public Works Department. Martin County received an application to request an amendment to the Land Development Regulations in regards to mining. We separated the request into two different ordinances to present to the board. The first ordinance was to create a mining application, which was reviewed, presented to the board on June 22nd, and adopted. This, today is the second part of the request, which is to amend the Land Development Regulations to include mining standards, which is also to increase the maximum depth of the allowable excavation. So today, we have the applicant here to present to you what their proposal is for this ordinance. So I'm going to turn it over to the applicant at this time.
Hey. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Melissa Corbett with the Milcor Group for the record. We are here to present a request to extend the allowable excavation depth from 20, the current 20 feet to 40 feet. We went before the LPA a couple months ago, and we received a lot of good feedback and input, thoughts, little things that could be addressed. So we have worked very closely with county staff and our hydrogeologist to add some language. We feel we've made a lot of strides in that direction. There is, the current ordinance that's before you is more restrictive than anything that the DEP or the South Florida Water Management District requires, which we feel is consistent with Martin County. Martin County is more stringent on water quality standards than either of these agencies, so we felt it was fitting for the excavation and fill code to be the same. We've also put teeth in it so that if there are issues, county staff has the ability to go out and shut the applicant or the operator down. To go into the full details, I'm going to bring up our professional hydrogeologist that's on the team, and with that, I will turn it over to Elliot.
Morning.
Good morning. Please state your full name for the record.
My name is Elliot Mallard. I'm a licensed professional geologist in the state of Florida, and I'm also the Mining and Water Resources Program Manager for Kleinfelder here in the state of Florida.
And you're going to have to speak up into that microphone, Elliot.
Okay. Need this microphone here?
Yeah.
All right, can you move it now?
Somewhere down there.
Is that good? Yeah, I think we can go to the...
Can you open the whole slide presentation up, Ms. Cullen?
We have, as a result of the LPA meeting, we've met with, both had phone calls with Michelle and Lisa, and tried to, as Melissa said, is try to give some teeth or give some enforceability to the excavation ordinance as the increased depth from 20 to 40 feet. The reporting, increased reporting required would be soil sampling to make sure that the drilling reflected that the sampling and the increased mining depth would only be for sand, which would include soil sampling of five-foot intervals. It would provide lithologic descriptions. The sieve analysis that you see there is actually screening through wire mesh screens to make sure to prove that the material that was going to be excavated would be sand, as described in the revised ordinance, and it would also include water quality testing to make sure that there was no degradation during the process of the local superficial I don't know if you want me to go through these individually, but this is just an example of the text. We would make sure that the soil sampling would be a minimum of 10 feet below the proposed excavation depth for all of the holes, and this relates to the confining unit at the base of the superficial aquifer locally. And we can get into that into more detail. However, the proposed excavation depth is much shallower than what the United States Geological Survey and the Florida Geological Survey show in the data for Martin County. So the samples will be collected on five-foot intervals, one hole per every 10 acres of the mining operation. One individual drill hole would be drilled to 70 feet, which would be more than, or at least 30 feet below the depth of the proposed excavation depth. One soil sample would be drilled using a standard penetration test, which is an engineering test that shows the stability of the material that's going to be excavated. The lithologic descriptions are a geologist sitting on the rig, looking at those five-foot samples, and describing what's in those five-foot samples. The sieve analysis is, again, you've got a stack of screens, and what that shows is sand, if you think about the size of sand, it's going to be minus 1/4 inch on the top end and larger than 1/16 inch on the top end, and that's the definition of sand when you're looking at screen sizes. So that would, so we put some language in there to do that, and then also conducting background water quality samples for the excavation area. These are from environmental resource permits from the Department of Environmental Protection, the mining mitigation program. So these are contaminants that are tested as parts of primary, secondary drinking water standards related to Chapter 62302, 62550, and 6277 Florida Administrative Code, and all the mines that are tested for groundwater quality pre-mining, the background water quality are tested for these criteria for the state of Florida.
So may I stop you there and have a question? So you're saying that all of these drinking water, drinking water standards, mines are held to drinking water standards?
Parts of the drinking water standards, yes. That's not the full drinking water standard, but these four mines, these particular analytes are tested for mining projects, for environmental resource projects, environmental resource permit mining projects.
And that's a state standard? Is that achievable?
Yes, absolutely.
So all current mines in Florida are held to those standards?
That's correct.
To, for drinking water?
For these particular analytes, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Just on the excavation standards, 100 feet from any road right of way, 100 feet from any property line, that would be the offsets, no alteration of the natural hydro period, and 300 feet from any existing well or septic system, that would be setbacks. Just some, local counties, St. Lucie County, the maximum per bed mining depth is 50 feet. Indian River County, there's no depth requirement. Okeechobee County, no depth requirement. And what I can tell you from working in others, other counties in the state of Florida, is that the DEP permitting and the water management districts will allow, when I have permitted two mines in the last six months, they allow mining from two feet of the confining unit, and those are written in permit language and other ERP and water management district permits. So we're putting extra thickness so we don't, wouldn't have an issue with impacting the confining unit in the superficial aquifer.
Maybe everybody up here knows what that is, but you might want to explain for those that don't.
Okay, so in this area of Martin County and most areas of Florida, you've got what is called the superficial aquifer. That extends primarily in Martin County at a depth of 3 to 4 feet. At the base of that superficial aquifer, you have what's called the intermediate confining unit or the Hawthorne group sediment, which is a very high clay material. That forms a boundary between the superficial aquifer and the underlying upper Florida aquifer. And in this drawing, if you look at the Hawthorne group, that's the intermediate confining unit below the superficial aquifer system. So when we look at DEP ERP permits and water management district ERP permits, they won't allow breach, breaching of the superficial, or the intermediate confining unit, because that's what separates the two aquifers. So what I do know from other permits is that DEP and water management, other water management districts will allow mining within two feet of that confining unit. We're not proposing that here. We're proposing that we've got at least 30 feet below the mining depth, and we're proving that there's that gap of 30 feet between where the proposed mining depth is and any confining unit. So this is just a... So this is a, just a general geologic, hydrogeologic section taken from a United States Geological Survey report for St. Lucie and Martin Counties. If you would look at Section EE at the very bottom, that's primarily within Martin County. Okay, next slide. And if you can look at the black line at the very top, they identify the green unit that would be what's called the Hawthorne group, which is the intermediate confining unit. The shallowest that you see, the top of that Hawthorne formation or the intermediate confining unit below the superficial aquifer, the shallowest that is is 100 feet. And this is published data. This isn't any interpretation. This is published data from the United States Geological Survey. And I, I won't get into that. I'll leave, leave questions, but my background is I've worked in the mining industry or for companies in the mining industry for over 35 years in the state of Florida, done a lot of work with superficial, intermediate, upper Floridian and lower Floridian wells in the state. So, you know, that's my background, working with mining companies and with the water resources in the state of Florida. And with that, I'll, I'll take questions.
Anybody have questions? Commissioner Hearn.
Yeah. Ms. Cullum, staff did not make a recommendation on this.
Our recommendation, I don't know if I can get back to the recommend, okay, thank you. Staff's recommendation is to, to move that the board consider the applicant's request and to provide direction to staff. We have alternative recommendations as well. The alternative is to move that the board adopt the proposed ordinance amending Article 4, Division 8, excavating, filling, and mining to create Section 4.348 mining standards as presented. Alternative is to move that the board adopt the proposed ordinance amending Article 4, Division 8, excavating, filling, and mining to create the section mining standards with revisions as directed by the board. Or the third alternative is do not adopt the ordinance.
And this proposal was not brought to us by Martin County?
Correct. It was...
We're not the applicant.
Correct.
Do you know why Martin County adopted 20 feet?
We, we were trying to find that. We are unable to find the technical data that supported the reasoning.
Did you find any evidence that there might be contamination, saltwater contamination?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I...
What was the LPA's recommendation?
They recommended denial 3-0.
So unanimously recommended denial?
Correct.
3-0.
3 to 0.
Yeah. I would move that we also deny the application. I think that our, our water quality in Martin County is, is of critical importance to all of us. There, there are unknowns about contamination. We certainly don't want to worsen our water quality conditions.
Okay. And the board has lit up. Commissioner Campy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sir, I'm, I'm happy that your last slide talked about your experience. One of the reasons, I think, and what I read in staff's agenda item was, is, look, we have a professional staff that is really remarkably intelligent, and they are experts in many topics, but they're not experts in all topics. You, sir, would you classify yourself as an expert in this topic?
In the hydrogeology of the superficial aquifer, yes.
Okay. So you're our expert in this particular case and...
He's the applicant.
Correct, but he's actually not the applicant. He's a representative, he's a professional consultant, expert for the applicant, who's sitting back there, who I happen to know. And then Ms. Corbett is also a professional engineer representing the applicant. Question, I guess, for Ms. Cullum. It's not uncommon for residents or members of the public to bring projects forward, desires forward that the staff then takes up because an applicant paid to bring something forward, to make a comprehensive plan change, to bring a development project forward, to bring a business opportunity forward. It's not uncommon that something is initiated by a member of the public, correct?
Correct.
So that comes off the table for me personally, that somehow you guys were doing work on behalf of an, of a member of the public, a private member of the public, because that happens all the time on a multitude of different types of projects. So I understand that, that Mr. Poma, who represents his personal interests, but also from what I've heard, has other people that are very interested to see how this pursues the process. How long does it take? If, the first time you heard about this, how long have you guys been working on it?
The applicant, I believe, submitted the application in the end of 2019. Yes, okay, thank you. 2019, with COVID in 2020, it, you know, delayed it a little bit longer, but we were working with them since 2019.
So a couple of years?
Correct.
And you and Ms. Wixter had to obviously educate yourselves on the general working knowledge of all of these things, so that you could offer any kind of assessment and advice to us, correct?
Correct.
You know a lot more about this now than you did in 2018?
Yes.
Okay. I asked the same questions. First off, I think the concept of, and I get that you've both been using the different terminology, mining for most people, especially a lot of people that were not born and raised in Florida, they start thinking about West Virginia and Pennsylvania and people that are wearing hard hats with lights on them and going down into mines in carts. We're really speaking more here about excavating, correct?
Correct.
Digging large holes into the ground to take up aggregate or sand or whatever else they might be looking for. Now, is the conversation here exclusively about sand? That's what I've heard, right? So we're not talking about aggregate, stone, anything else that might be found under the ground in Florida, specifically sand. Now, the reason I'm interested in this is because, and it wasn't even Mr. Poma at the time, when I was in office the first time, so let's talk a decade ago, out in Palm City, there are a couple of veins of really high-quality sand, and some people that had them on their property wanted to access them. Beach-quality sand. Actually, it even came up when we started to talk about how we could potentially replenish the beaches, that there were some beach-quality sand available, happens to be out in my district, in the rural portion of my district. So I'm more involved than maybe some of my colleagues purely because most of this activity would be happening in District 5, in between the Turnpike and Lake Okeechobee. One of the conversations that I had the opportunity to have with you and Ms. Wixter and also with the applicant's representative is that what is the minimum acreage of the properties we're discussing being allowed to be affected?
So this ordinance proposes that the minimum acreage would need to be 40, 40 acres.
40 acres or more? The minimum is 40?
The minimum is 40 acres.
Now, I personally think that that could be higher. And one of the advantages of having it out in Martin County, out west in Martin County, is it's not a matter of people on 40 acres. I personally, if we're going to, we have the ability to craft some of this, right? And to tailor this. I'm not interested in 40 acres. I think it's way too small. The goal here shouldn't be that it comes anywhere even inside the urban service boundary. They don't need to be digging 40 feet deep holes or pits, whatever you want to call them, in Jensen Beach or in the city of Stewart or wherever, unincorporated areas. I think this primarily should be a activity out west of, of the Turnpike. There was some talk about the, the parameters on the restrictions on where it could be done, and I think, Mr. Mallard, you had said, I'm calling, Mr. Mallard, that you had talked about not within 100 feet of the property line, not within 100 feet of someone else's residence. I think 100 feet, if you're talking acres and acres, 100 feet's a little slim. I think it could be, to be longer, further away than 100 feet. I'm just putting, you know, for my colleagues to hear some of my comments. I did ask, when I had the opportunity to speak to the applicant, what were our neighboring communities doing? And in his presentation, Mr. Mallard said that up in St. Lucie, it was 50, potentially 50 feet. And the others, when, Mr. Mallard, when you said that there was no restriction, does, what does that mean? Does that mean that they can dig as deep as they want?
They can dig as deep as they want, except for they cannot breach the confining unit below the sand.
So, and you showed us those charts with the layers. How deep could that be? I know it's, it's site-specific, but give me a, for instance, like, are we talking 80 feet?
If, if, there could be sand to a depth of 80 feet, but that's, that would be unlikely in Martin County.
But then, if the closer they're getting, they're getting into that sort of, that safety zone of knocking into some of the other aquifers and some of the other areas that...
There is one aquifer above, so that's not several, it's one superficial aquifer, then a confining unit beneath that.
Correct. And then there's the upper Floridian and the lower Floridian.
Yes, Floridian.
Floridian, I apologize. There's been a request of mine for, can we go deeper than 20 for quite a while? And I agree with Commissioner Hearn that water quality is paramount for us residents and for the stewards of that. And I just don't think that if we, and the question for Ms. Cullum, and I apologize for bouncing back and forth, but the 20-foot regulations that we have in place, Mr. Mallard had said, or I think Ms. Corbett said something about adding teeth to it. What's the current status? People can dig 20 feet deep on what size piece of property? What's the minimum we have now?
We don't have a minimum for the size of the lot for...
So, so if someone had five acres and there was something in the ground that they found through boring or sampling that they wanted to dig, they could dig 20 feet down now?
Correct.
Anywhere in Martin County?
With the setbacks.
Are the setbacks in place?
We do have setbacks. They are, right now, it is 50 feet from the right-of-way line and then 25 feet from the property line.
Okay, so 25 feet from a property line. Ms. Wixter, 20.
I'm sorry, 20.
20. 25 feet from the, 20 feet from the property line is what most average neighborhoods have in, have next to the sides of their homes. So you could almost dig a 20-foot-deep mining, excavating, you have to get a permit, though, correct?
Correct.
How much does the permit cost?
$320.
Okay. How much is the permit going to cost for this, new, if we go down deeper?
For mine, so it's, for the mining operation, we have not established a permit fee for that.
Okay. I mean, I think if, if we're allowing 40 in areas that are more appropriate, and we then also close some of the open-ended opportunities that people have to excavate elsewhere in the county, I would be in favor of that. Because I don't, I, I think that if we closed up our current options and allowed deeper but west of the Turnpike, where that kind of activity is more appropriate and not as adverse to neighbors. And I agree, this man is a professional. No one's questioning, I don't assume any of us up here are questioning his credentials or his experience or the, or, I can't speak for my colleagues. I believe you. 35 years in the business, multitudes of different opportunities, you've done the research. I'm not opposed to making it geographically restricted and then working to regulate the parameters in which a person can dig. We didn't discuss anything about checks and balances. If an operation is done and they're, got a geologist out there and they're taking samples every five feet, what infrastructure at the county level would we have to, to make sure that that's happening appropriately? What's the process currently, and what do we recommend it to be?
Currently, they are for mining operations or for, for what we have in the standards that they would have to do quarterly hauling reports. That would be submitted to us to tell us whether or not they're still in the, in the compliance with the conditions of the application in the development order. And then annually, they are required to submit reports to show that they are in compliance as well. At that time, that's when we do monthly inspections, we do weekly inspections with our inspectors to go out into the field and see how, that they are in compliance as well.
Unannounced?
Correct.
And that's, you said, weekly and monthly?
Yeah, we, we have, we have inspectors that can go out weekly. If it gets to a point where we need to send them daily, we can do that.
During active, active excavation. How many projects, excavation permits do you issue in a year, have you, in the past? Not, not the pandemic year, but in general? Like, is this, is this a big thing or is this once in a blue moon?
Excavation and mining are different, right?
Yeah, excavation and filling permits are different than mining operations.
Okay, so this is classified as mining?
Correct.
How many mining permits in a, in a normal year?
I believe one every two years. So we don't get very many.
So this is not opening a Pandora's box that magically we're going to start digging up the whole county? This is once, as you said, once every couple of years?
From my experience being here, yes.
Ms. Wixter, you've been here a long time. Do you agree? She shook her head that she does agree. I'd make a motion to accept, no, we're, we're not...
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hearn.
Okay, I'll wait.
And Krista, Ms. Story?
Yes, Krista Story with the County Attorney's Office. I just wanted to clarify something Commissioner Campy asked about the, a permit fee for this type of operation. This would constitute a major development application, correct? So I've had people whisper in my ear, that is approximately $10,000, because it goes through that process. So just to add that piece of factual information.
That's good. It's much more than $300.
And it requires public hearings.
And it really separates people that are just, you know, rolling in to do it. Very important information. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins, you've been patiently waiting over there.
So I've had the opportunity to meet the applicant and his professional people, hydrologist, which, a different guy, a number of times. I've also met with staff a number of times, and I am a, the dirt guy up here, so I understand...
But you're not dirty.
I'm not dirty. So the, the, trying to come up with the benefit of approving this to the collective of Martin County, what are the benefits? I've come up with two. The deeper you go, the less land, I guess, you're going to have to disturb, right? And there is a need for clean fill in Martin County. I mean, I buy clean fill in my business quite a bit, and, and it is always a problem. I've come up with those two. Is there any additional to those two that you guys can think of, why we would?
Sand for concrete.
Sand for concrete, yeah.
Masonry sand.
Okay.
That would be produced out of these type of materials, so concrete, masonry.
Economic development.
Okay. So the whole time, every time I've met, I, we have a professional staff that Mr. Campy has, has, has pointed out that I rely on, I'm not a geologist, hydrologist, engineer, I'm nothing. I rely on our professional staff, which I highly respect. And for our professional staff not to be able to come back with the confidence of recommending approval of this, I hesitate. Yes, you're obviously very qualified, but your salary's being paid by the applicant. I get that. That's what Commissioner Hearn was referring to.
But if I can interject...
Does, does the benefit...
I can interject real quick, though.
Okay. You might...
I heard the same thing from the local planning agency.
Okay.
I'm professionally licensed, okay? I'm not a hired...
I don't want to disparage you at all.
We can only speak one at a time for the record.
And if you ruin my train of thought, I'm liable to fall off the ledge here. So what, what is, is the benefit of bringing economic development, sand for concrete, preserving more land above water? Is that enough for us to hire our own geologist, hydrologist person to, for ourselves? Because if we do approve that, we're going to have to have somebody similar to that to be able to, to review the, any future applicant that comes into our system, correct? I mean, you're...
Correct. So what we have in, in the proposed ordinance, that we have the right to retain independent technical consultants to be the experts to help review and assist with the application? And then the cost of that would be up to the applicant to pay?
I understand that, but at the same time, the only way that I'm going to have confidence in this approval is for you and, and Lisa to be able to say, yes, we've vetted this, there is no environmental impacts, there's nothing, and these are the benefits. So I'm just, I'm not there. I, I think that this needs to, we need to maybe tap the brakes on this and, and hire this person. person for us, is, and again, I'll take your recommendation on that.
Yes, we...
I rambled quite a bit, I'm sorry.
You're going to have to really speak up.
Lisa Wixser, I'm the county engineer, and we did not hire a consultant to review the proposal as it is, because it wasn't our application.
Right.
So we feel that we could probably have somebody look at, especially the water quality, because I think that what's in the presentation versus what's in this, in the proposal is not completely consistent yet. So if it is something that the board would want us to look at, we would recommend going out for CCNA and hiring a team to review what we have proposed in front of you, if that's something the board wanted to pursue.
Commissioner Smith.
So first off, generally speaking, I'm inclined to support the idea. I, I don't think what's being asked is, is, is wrong. I don't think there's a wrong or a right. I think to Harold's point, I think in most cases, if, if our staff doesn't have the discipline built into our staff system, we go out and hire someone that is an expert in that, and we work hand-in-hand with the applicant and with our consultants, and we make sure that of the best interest of what we are looking for is, is looking out, and some of you have said it in different ways, but in the best interest of our, of our county, of our, of our residents, and so on. So, you know, I think of like, when we do tower ordinances, we go out and hire a tower ordinance expert, because we don't have an internal tower or necessarily expert. On the legal side of things, if there's been growth management issues through the years, we've hired outside, sometimes growth management experts, both on the legal side and on the growth management side. If we didn't have that exact expertise inside, we went out and got that. So that we, at any given time, could defend the county's position if we needed to. And sir, I'm, I'm not suggesting that your qualifications aren't of the highest level, fair enough. But in all instances where we are being asked to do something that is in, is in a capacity way outside the realm of our capacity, certainly, we have a dirt guy, I'm not a dirt guy, he is a dirt guy. I've listened to staff, and I've had conversations with them, and I will share with you that they are sometimes, you know, we're not sure a hundred percent on, on what the answer is and what it should be. And I think that's probably why we got the recommendation from staff we got, because they're maybe not a hundred percent saying, look, we can with, like, complete certainty give you the answer you're looking for, so you can make the decision, the best decision on, on the case of, of this issue. So I'm along with Harold. I, I think, I would ask, and I know it's been since 2019, and that's sort of crazy it's taken that long, but COVID and other things have been in the way. I think we should get someone on contract that represents us, that can work with you and the applicant, and, and your professional guidance, and do it as quickly as possible. I, I'm not suggesting take another year, you know, I'm talking months, if that's possible. But be able to come back to us with saying, like, and even in, even in what's being asked for, here are the specific, Ed's point, are the setbacks appropriate? Is that really the type of setback we want? Do we want more, do we want less? Does it make sense that if there were a large tract of land inside the urban service boundary that was minable, should we still allow that to be mined? Or not? I mean, you know, are there pros and cons? Is there a geographical area that we say, no, we're going to limit mining to this box out here, because that makes the most sense? Separation from water bodies and rivers and whatnot, you know, I, what should be the appropriate distance from that? If there is, if there is such a connection one way or the other to whether or not we go deeper or we don't. So that's, that's my support, and, and if there's a financial burden with that, I, I think as we would do with any instance, I think, for my, for my one on this, I think you got to have somebody on, on our side, at least saying, we agree a hundred percent with what you're saying, or we would modify what you're saying by this. And professionals, lawyers, everybody can argue, I mean, you can take two lawyers and put them in a room and give them a question, and you get two different answers. Would you agree?
And I, and I think, I'll, you know, talk about this with the applicant, and we're happy to have that, that external review.
Yeah, and so I, this, this isn't questioning your integrity, your ability, the applicant's integrity and ability. It's more, I think, from our side of the equation, saying, look, I'm not an expert, he might be, they're not, and they said as much that they're not, they know, they know a lot more than they did in 2018. I think that was the year that you chose, somebody used. But that's my thought. I, I just think, I'm not sure what happens. I, I know there have been some circumstances down south of us that have gone wrong, when the, when things went wrong. And I don't think we should put ourselves in a place of doing that. And, and again, that's not your fault. I'm looking at you because you're standing there.
No, I'm not.
But I just think we need to be a little bit, in a little bit better, firmer space than we're in right now.
I would agree with those comments, and there's a lot of unknowns, and I think potential unintended consequences with the way the ordinance is written now, and water quality is just one of them. I think there's a number of things that could be fine-tuned, like the every, you know, the every ten acres, and so there's a number of things that could be looked at. But we still have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hurd to deny the, which is option number three, do not adopt the ordinance. Commissioner Smith?
I'm sure I'd offer up a substitute motion that we direct staff to hire, I don't know, can you go out and directly hire, do we have to go to bid? I mean, not bid, but do we have to go to qualification requests?
My recommendation would be to go out for qualifications because of the detail we have...
That's fine. However you want to word it, just tell me that, and that's what I'll...
...related, that those services pertain to analyzing soils, not necessarily the in-depth...
Can't, can't hear you very well at all, Lisa.
Microphones are a failure.
Yep.
I believe we would need to go out for CCNA specific for this request.
Okay, so my motion would be that we request staff to prepare a CCNA...
Request for qualifications?
Request for qualifications for mining purposes, discussion, able to advise us and, and give us more direction and more understanding from our perspective, so that we can come back, so that we can come back, staff, so staff can come back with a, with a clear, clearly defined recommendation. And again, at least on my motion side, it's full disclosure, to work with the applicant as well, that it is in conjunction, it's not in a silo, but we have our team representing us, and the applicant will have their folks representing them. And to also, as, as quickly as that RFP can put, be put out, and responded to, and hired, and as soon as quickly as we can get them on board, to get it back before us as quickly as, as that time allows. And, and that's not yours, that's months.
Okay, so now we have a substitute motion on the floor...
Second for discussion.
...by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Campy for discussion, and go ahead.
Yes.
Keeping in mind that we're about, about, our closed captioning break is approaching too.
That's going to take longer than what I was going to say. I'm completely in favor of the motion. I just assumed that when the agenda item came forward, we're not allowed to speak to each other. I just thought we were rolling our sleeves up and giving suggestions on how we could have crafted language that worked for us and them. If we're going to go through the process of hiring someone, terrific, but the only reason I was, said as much as I did, is I thought we were actually doing it today.
That's because of you.
That's fine.
We expect that.
No, I mean, never mind about the pot and the kettle.
Okay, so we have a, we have a, Ms. Story, is there a line on, or is that...
No, it's a, just to clarify, if you're thinking about your motion, so the impact of the motion would be that, as I understand, you would take no action on the ordinance, and then this would then necessitate it coming back through the process, including going to the local planning agency with, with this dialogue between the applicant, dialogue between the applicant and staff. Because it is not possible at this point to know what could be in the ordinance, and the timing, and you, a public hearing can only be continued to a date certain, and we do not know that. So that would be implicit in the motion as you have put it forth, from our understanding.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, just a question. So the motion is to spend tax dollars to evaluate a private application?
I think the recommendation was that the applicant pay the, the cost of that. It's their application, just as we, as in we do with a consultant for a cell tower. That, I think, is what the intent was. Am I incorrect? No, it wouldn't, it's not the county's application.
So we're not paying for the, the experts?
I didn't hear that in the motion.
No, I didn't, but you said it in your presentation, and, and I don't know if the applicant's agreeable to that or not. Look, I, you know, it'd be great if the applicant would, but I also understand why they wouldn't, and, and at the end of the day, we need, we, the county, on our side of this, the county needs to be in a position where staff can recommend either approval or denial to us, and if there's a cost associated with that, and, and the, the flip side is, we make a wrong decision that goes very, very bad, the cost that we would spend on an expert working on our behalf would, would pale in terms of what the mistake was. So, you know, Melissa, do you want to, do you want to answer that? No, yes?
We have actually offered to pay the cost, but there, there has to be some limit to it. It can't be an open-ended dollar amount. My client is willing to fund up to ten thousand dollars in other consultant fees for this phase. And, and please understand that our thought process was that whatever team, county staff gets on board, that they would remain on board on a continuing services basis, so that in the future, if an application does come in, that those experts can review that, and the applicant, at that point in time, would bear the cost of those fees as a part of their application. I mean, I understand that the application fee will probably be somewhere around the cost of a major development, but over and above that, there would also be the cost of this, these consultants. And, and everybody on our team is fine with that, but this initial phase, if, if we could have a cap of ten grand, that would be acceptable to us.
That seems reasonable, thank you for that. Ms. Wood, it's just a clarity on the, on the process. So if we were to put a time certain on coming back with this, and I, I understand what Krista said, but do we have to go back through the process all over again, start like as if we're starting from scratch? Or can we not continue this, and staff comes back with a recommendation?
There's a couple of concerns I would have, quite frankly. Number one, I don't know how you would be able to, you must continue to a date certain, so you'd be, if, you'd have to be really good at seeing into the future to see how you would do that. My, my second concern, and I'm, we've discussed this at a staff level, is that once you've had the analysis by the county's expert, you would, you could come up with something that bared very little to no resemblance to what you're currently considering, and so why wouldn't you want to go through the LPA and the process again? But the more immediate issue that, that we had as staff was, it's almost impossible to pinpoint what the date certain would be.
Right, but you could pick a date in January or December for a commission meeting date, and you make the date, or you don't make the date, and when it gets there, we continue again, correct? I, I just, I'm, we could, just in my...
Yeah, you can do it, but, you know, this has been continued...
Twice.
Twice, already.
So, I, my thought about this, again, we could have today, if we had gone, and I'm not picking on you, just, Ed offered up, Ed offered up a whole bunch of changes that we might have considered, that were not maybe considered at the LPA, and we could have approved them today, is that correct?
Yes.
So those could have been significant changes that no one would have ever heard.
Correct.
Okay, so we could, in fact...
Sure.
...continue it to a date certain, and just pick up the changes as they come forward, and accept them, and not have to go back through the process again. We could.
I, I'm...
You're not recommending that, but we could.
And I don't know whether you've set your calendar for January, but you could do that. I, I think it's a date certain. I think you've got to have the date. But, but that's fine, sure.
So we pick a date, and we make sure that when we adopt the calendar in November, that it's, that is a date on our calendar, you know?
Sure.
I don't necessarily like...
You don't?
We're going too far down, I think this...
Huh?
Commissioner Jenkins, go ahead.
It's come a long way...
Bring this home, will you?
...from where the LPA heard it, to where it is today. I, I think it should circle back and, and go through the process.
Fine, I'm just trying to push time.
I know.
We all, for me personally, I, I'll defend where I come from on this, time is money. And sometimes we forget that. And I say we, I'll just say the collective world forgets that, and so I think of time as money. And so if there's a way to shave off time, then that's what I'm always trying to push for, but if you want to go back through it, it's fine.
I think staff is aware...
And that should be the direction, right?
That it's, that it's taken a while, and I'm sure that they would like to tackle this while it's fresh on their mind, so I think they will...
Okay.
...expeditiously.
So my motion stands, and as it is, with the exception that it would, that it would reflect that the applicant would cover the cost of the consultants up to ten thousand for this first phase, with the understanding that future mining operations, if there were to be consultant time added to that review, would be borne by the next mine coming in for the, or for the next applicant, rather. Does that cover everything?
Is that clear to everyone, what motion is on the floor by Commissioner Smith? Is that clear to staff, the motion that's on the floor? And that has been seconded by Commissioner Campy. And seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. Thank you very much for working through that, and we are going to break for our, our lunch break, and return at 2:00 PM, and we will return with public hearing number three. Thank you very much.